It's gonna be a ten hour night.
Don't say that.
Five hour, sorry, five hour night.
Come next time, I would be happy to have some questions.
That's probably very true, but hopefully my council peers will be paying attention.
Okay, so one line is up.
Right.
Brian has some in his eyes. But there's no, yeah.
I mean, we wait. On our teams.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Yeah, right.
Sure.
Yeah. All right. What did? All will be me and I. All I'm listening to.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And she's.
Is she okay?
Uh, she's a great designer. They, I do know. She's the same. And then she also made.
Great.
Oh, it's a little bit of a.
Great, very nice.
Six years, yeah.
Thank you so much.
They've got a connection. For us.
They're like, yes, well.
Oh, cool. They couldn't have done this. You know, they're not.
That's probably, that's a lot better.
Yeah.
Updated CC, the road product.
Yes. It's not that. I'll be very, very proud.
We think.
We think. What's, uh? Yeah. So.
That's good. Well. Well, yeah. That's.
I'm kind of bad at keeping.
Yes. Yes, but.
Thank you. You're here in San Antonio. Yeah, that's my stuff.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yeah.
So much.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, essentially, it's seven, they're moving along. Yeah, I would like to change things. I don't know what I have all. Um, please, that's all. You know, it's getting a little wrong, we're very tired. It was a lot of, as well as. I like that. It's, I guess, how. Yeah, I can see it walking and I'm big and I want to. No, my reference has this. You're, you're not over there. Or damage that is coming. Bottom feeling. I mean, you've got an option. It's, yeah, that's sort of showing me. It's like this. Yes, you would be. This people thought it's. Yeah, it's funny, every few times. Modeling, I said, first two modeling, you want to sign them.
One person, Alex.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Hey, well, I appreciate everybody coming for a night to our, uh, like informational sessions for the, the current, uh, designs. For the CCMG projects, uh, for those who weren't here last night, uh, we have two people from DLZ. Uh, we have Todd and Mike and, um, they're here to discuss the, uh, about the changes, so I'll open it up to Todd. First of all, just to kind of describe the differences since the conceptual drawings were put out there and, uh, and what were, uh, the major, uh, changes to tonight's, uh, more mature design? Coming out of the, the surveying and the public feedback that he was able to incorporate, so. I'll let, uh, him go, just to make note, we are recording the session on Zoom. Uh, we had one person, Tim Rice, uh, joining us, and now there's major one as we go, we're scheduled for two hours this evening. We're back right up against the, uh, council meeting, starts at seven, so it'll be a firm stop.
So, yeah, as, as Dan said, uh, a couple things we wanted to highlight, uh, from the initial concept, uh, overall concept drawings that were originally done. Again, that, but those were high level. You know, as we listened to and incorporated all the public comment that we've gotten thus far, um, you know, some of the highlights that we've been able to do is, um, reduce the amount of storms to, uh, by thirteen hundred feet. Um, take out, you know, approximately twenty inlets. Um, which had reduced that construction cost in that regard about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then, uh, another big, what I would call big ticket item was, uh, any driveway impacts. We were able to reduce, uh, redoing some of the driveways, uh, which saved another about seventy thousand. So we're a little over three hundred thousand of what we have reduced the cost of the, the project by the original construction scope. Um, and because of that, we've been able to increase swales and use swales to help not only, uh, allow the water to percolate back into the ground, but also, um, provide us with a little bit of filtration that the, the water, as it picks its way to the lake over the surface, you know, it can, it can help filter some of those sediments and any of that.
That's a swell.
A swell, uh, a low area of ground right off the road, so the water will come off the road and hit and, and stay in that swell, hitting it off the road. So. Uh. Where I was saying is, you know, uh, the swales will help protect the, the quality of the water that's going to the lake, like the lake quality, so. Um. With that, um, Dan, do you have any other?
I don't, I, like, last night, we just, uh, opened it up for comments from people in the room, and, uh, it's just an open session of question and answer to the best of, uh, Todd's ability, so.
Yes.
Can you tell me what you're gonna do about the, um, the northern part of five Harper Estates where the water comes from the county? Over through the money yard and down and fills the channel with dirt and runs all the way down to Darren Burke's garage door.
Yes, now you remember what page that's on, it's, it's a deep over two.
We finished there last.
Yes, yes. Yeah, I think you guys might have different page numbers just from that.
Slide eight.
Yep.
They, they raised the road, they raised seven hundred, I think about three inches, a few years back before COVID.
This one, right?
And they, they put in, um, two catch basins, two small catch basins on the west side of. And catch basins on my side. Catch basin on my side is full because people go back there with their dump trucks to get rock from the gravel pit and that road's collapsing, and that's why that's dying over there.
So.
And that's County Road, I know that, but I never.
Um, bang, the five. And our. Sorry. Oh, words.
Todd, well, we're moving on that to the, to the point that she's making. Uh, is there any relationship during this process that you would, that you have DLZ and whatever contract we select with the county, that if we encounter a, a broken tile or, or drain line in county property that we can get them to come fix it so that we're not having a good drain line with bad stuff coming to it?
Yeah, we can, we can reach out to the county audit board, yep, and work, work through that if we were in town, that may be the case here, I think that, yeah, that we're, uh, nibbling now.
I don't know what size of pipe is that's out there now, but that channel is round, I guess, every time drained, and it's gonna get filled up. Freshed once, you.
So, um, just to start at the county road, describe the site with the drains coming in, but the plans for the open, to clean up the open.
And maybe, Ian, if you could share so Todd knows, she's just to the right over there when you see it. So you have an idea of the context of where she's coming from.
You're in. You're in. Perfect. So.
Yeah.
So, uh.
That, the catch basin that's right there is pretty full, I mean, it was deep when they first did it, it was really nuts, but the dirt, when they go into the gravel pit, comes right down, doesn't it?
Yeah, so you're right here.
Yeah. Is it gonna be a closed thing or is it gonna be open?
So the two, we're right there where the two fifteen inch pipes come from the county, if they had put in.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, up there, yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's, I think, what it says fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so those, those are those two that they put in, um, so we would put some rip rap, which is just large rock to help keep it from eroding and also help.
You dig it out a little bit?
Yeah.
Cause it used to be that I had to get over there a meter down and pull it flat.
Hmm.
Used to be. Needs rip rock in and all the way to seven.
So we would put it around, around those pipes where it would work, dig that out, put that in, and then, uh, we would regrade that entire swell as it comes all the way down. Yep.
Yep.
Down along quite our, make it grass, nice.
That comes right into it. I've got videos.
So, so make it so it's a nice big soil with the grass to help filter some of that sediment.
Okay.
Um, and as it all the way comes down, go into a, go into a pipe of rip rap around that, again, to help filter some of that sediment. It'll come into that pipe and go out into the channel.
And, um, you know, uh, specifically to your house, we can use some of the excavating, the dirt that comes out of that current swell that we're making larger to handle the volume of water and put it on your side of the property if you're amenable to that, to make it elevate your, your land a little bit above that uh, swell so that, uh, reduces any, it reduces any risk.
Yeah. It gets where our work in my picture would not.
Right, so. Uh, if you're amenable to that, you know, we discussed that it's a possibility. Otherwise, we just have to haul the dirt away and that's costly to the town, uh, we might as well just use it, uh, to your advantage, given the volume of water that's coming down there. And I think we also, uh, uh, in the, in the plan, not specifically drawn on here, we, we discussed since that's a large elevation, we discussed maybe an intermediary, uh, uh, set of rocks to slow the, slow it down even more to prevent, yeah, to prevent erosion.
Are you gonna use the existing swell or are you gonna make? I know you're gonna make a swell, but are you gonna use what's there, cause it seems like it's kind of crooked.
Make it, straighten it out, make it, use what's there a little bit, but make it a little bigger and straighten it out and make it come down. It'll still have a little bit of curve at the bottom there, but it'll, it'll definitely look a lot better.
There's plenty of road right away, we pretty much have artistic rights, uh, in that area, so.
Uh, I have a question on the rip rap, I, I like the idea because that slows down the water and collects the sediments and that. What's the useful life of that, it has to be maintained, taken back out, redone, because at some point it fills up and it's not gonna do its job.
Um, is a rip rap about halfway up typically? For orders or? As far as the original. Usually, as far as a, a pipe?
No, or, uh, a rip rap isn't a rock just gonna grab the ditch.
Mm-hmm.
So like, and then the outer sides are higher than the inside, there isn't like halfway up that, uh, the rocks that it's filled with sediment, you gotta clean that out?
Yeah, so it's hard to put an actual timeline on, on how that'll fill up, not, not knowing how much sediment, but yeah, something to that, that, um.
I, all I know, um, cause I'm a stormwater, um, construction, uh, operator from Michigan. Now, in Michigan, those are required halfway up. So, uh, just so that way the water can flow through.
Todd, how, I'm sorry.
Oh, hey, I was just gonna add, sorry, um, you know, sometimes they can take and, and suck out. They don't have to remove all of the rip rap, they can just suck it out with the back and get it, so it's not as, God has labor intensive to clean that up.
I was just gonna ask, uh, we have property markers on all of your drawings. Uh, hundred percent accurate, ninety-five percent close, as far as where the point goes, and again, the, the point of the question is, uh, if your drawing is correct, uh, then we have that new pipe uh, going into the channel there on private property. Uh, GIS has that property line somewhere else, which I understand is close, but I have a survey which is, uh, also a little different, and of course, push goes to shove, it's the survey, but the survey was dated, uh, like nineteen seventy-five, and although the property states will be accurate, relationships to the end of the channel may change, you know, the channel may have either been excavated out or filled in, so you can't necessarily use that channel end as that's it. And that property line may come across higher, so long, long question, um, the part that appears to be on private property would need an ease.
Yeah, we could always shift that up to a little bit more.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, to see if that'll hit that, that easement, that existing easement. Um, but as you said.
But yeah, that, that's gonna move it quite a bit, I think that's west. If you were to shift it up and keep it in the easement.
Mm-hmm.
I think that dotted line is the top of the easement coming across.
There's a, according to the plat, so again, that, which may differ from that too, you know, the records were, um, there should be an additional drain easement line there, or it would be the east side of that property, I believe. Okay.
So.
But.
Um, why can't you use the line that's already there and then you won't have that easement problem?
The determination was that, wow, it's a bat, that fifteen can't handle all the water coming down.
But you're still gonna keep that?
Keep it as an overflow, yes.
I think the other complication isn't it, it, it goes underneath the building?
And yeah, it's go underneath that.
It's a little shallow.
There's a bed or something there.
Okay.
So, so on this slide, um, you have a catch basin, um, let's identify sixty-one in the lower center of the slide there, uh, there's an existing over, uh, to the left.
We, we said sixty-one, so.
Yeah, there's sixty-one, I've got sixty-one.
Oh, this way.
More, more, more.
Go left, go to the left.
Yeah.
Bingo. Good job. Um, there's a distinct extension and being in construction, I know when you move something, there's always a problem associated with it. Why are we moving an existing catch basin? When at the, on, at the other end of this plat, uh, there's a catch basin that we're not moving.
So. I knew, I know there will, we shot a catch basin there to, would be the east, the bottom there, but that was what was shot. On the west side was just an open pipe.
It's this one here.
Yep.
Yeah, there's a, there's a catch basin here and a very nice one there.
Mm-hmm.
And so we're moving this guy over, I don't know what that distance is, I, I don't know the scale here.
So that means all new pipe too.
Well, new catch basin, new pipe and.
Yeah.
The pipe, yes. New pipe.
With all the town driveways, so. We took it number one.
Yes.
Had it already there, so.
Uh. A lot of times, the, the existing pipe there is a corrugated metal pipe, which, as you know, don't always last long, and so, you know, recommendation would be to replace that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, as needed.
Well, we'll probably do that at the other end too, and at, at the other end, you get the same scenario, the same vintage, it's a nineteen seventy-five pipe that was put in.
Yeah, so, uh, chance of that.
If we're gonna. Been bought used.
Yeah. Uh.
I know the guy who put them in, so. Uh, but I'm just, I know every time I dig an extra hole, I'm gonna charge somebody for it, and we're digging an extra hole here. And it might not be pennies, but the penny's add up.
The.
Well.
It's, it's in the town.
Didn't come across definitively, we are replacing that pipe. Yes, because you know it is steel and you know that it will, it's got age and it's gonna degrade and we're, we're investing, we're gonna eliminate the risk of having to dig the road out, because we have a collapsed metal tile. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's, yeah, that's my understanding of the design. As far as moving it, all Darren said last night is that it positions it, uh, on a lot of things.
Does that matter?
But it, but it does, does the master, number one is number two at the other end.
Nobody's flock, I'm just saying, that's, that's, that's what we were told last night. Like, you know, whether, what the value is or whether, whether it matters, I guess, uh, I don't.
Well, it matters because of the money to hold.
I mean, it makes sense to redo the pipe, I think that makes a lot of sense, you clearly explained that, but I think the question is, does it matter on the manhole or maybe at all? And now.
Uh, from a design perspective and requirements, if matters, not.
Okay.
No, you're on. You're either.
I just want to go ahead, cause you took mine.
Oh, it's bullshit.
Yeah, that was mine.
Um.
I'll let him to know.
Because it will drain equally well if it's pretty deep to one, one and another, so.
But still an expense.
I don't know if it's any much more of an expense, when you're moving it eight, five feet and it is believable where it's at, but.
But I think it's a standard, it's protocol, if we're not typically moving manholes to sit on property lines, then this may appear as not standard, I guess.
It probably works out if it was in the middle of the property, um, and restricting reasonable use of that property for the owner. And at the other end of this, that's exactly what it is, it breaks in the middle of the property. So, I mean, when, uh, I'm just a bystander, I don't, you know, but, uh, from a, uh, planning perspective, anytime you try to mitigate the least, the late, less or the issues for property owners, that's where they will typically solve it, or like, Dan said, it's probably not affecting anyone that much in this case. Now, it's a close one up, I mean.
Okay, I'm just thinking, but it's got a question, if the pipe is all, and it's probably not, what, twelve or eighteen inch pipe, you're guessing?
I think it was twelve.
The one we're talking about, or twelve, yeah. Are you gonna replace that with a clear liner eighteen or twenty-four?
The two, the, the two pipes that we're talking about, this one right there.
Six, he said a sixty-one.
Yep. No, that one would be replaced in kind with a twelve, I don't.
Why would you, maybe it's a double question, why wouldn't you go up a little bit bigger, like, I'm just looking at this lady's phone and there's a flood going across the property.
So that one, we're limited a little bit by cover, we don't have a lot of, uh, distance to go put cover over the, over the pipe with the road, so we still gotta keep it uh, fire should be in my. So, they would, uh, so these two, these two road crossings would, uh, were limited by how much deep depth we can go, as well as allowing cover over the top of the pipe, one, to protect the pipe so it doesn't get crushed, and two, not to haul over with the road.
You're gonna dig it up with that back on the bucket, why wouldn't you run it to?
That area, I'm trying to be some wrong, that area there was my understanding, that doesn't get as much water there as it does.
I'm gonna record it.
Yeah.
I've got a question on the legend down here, there's a C on a circle that says, if you, if you see CP in my, approaches. Residential, what does that mean? I haven't found a C on any of this stuff.
That's a concrete approach if it was. Oh. It'd be a new concrete, a pretty certain, a little bit of concrete, a driveway if needed.
Cause some of the legends, I think from last night, we learned that they're just kind of carried over the, like a standard, like the whole mailbox question.
Yep.
It's not that you're doing something specifically with mailboxes in a certain area, it's just, it happens to appear here, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And that would be another reason.
Yes.
Yeah, originally there were some driveway replacements and that, and that was one of the comments that we received, that we wanted to minimize you know, any type of driveway replacement, power replacement, so some of those things are still in the legend.
No, that's fine, just to clarify.
Thank you.
But as we replace gravel to gravel, concrete to concrete, asphalt to asphalt, if you get into a driveway, whatever the material is, it's what you go back with, correct?
Correct, there's a little bit, um, the, the only issue you do run into, and this is just for future, uh, discussion, it is when you've got gravel up against the asphalt, the car will take that gravel out.
Yeah.
When you've got gravel up against the asphalt, the car will take that gravel out, so. It may be something to think about in the future, it is. And even this time, you want to pave so far back, we've got a little bit here, uh, where we could. Bump out a little bit with the asphalt while we're doing it, um, which would help minimize that. But it's, it's definitely something that would shorten the lifespan of the road by having all that gravel.
Is that something we would consider, Todd, um. Where Dan Matt was talking about, where he's gotta carry the shovel and go. Is that something that would be?
Over, over by Joe's property.
Yes, yeah, I, yeah, I'm like, I'm just like, who wasn't up here, Matt was the one that said that, I was, yeah.
And run that pavement out a little bit farther, just to help keep that.
Yeah, and that forty, forty-two-ish and wherever the dip was, okay. Right, that would, I think that would be good.
I'm, uh, Quiet Harbor that we're looking at right now, uh, as we talked last night. I got a, a note today, an email from somebody that sort of echoed my point of local knowledge. How important that is, uh. Quiet Harbor is all built. And it came off of the hill that is now Quiet Harbor State. That hill came this way and then down. And they scraped it all back, put. Cover the coating material for the coating that was there, the arena, into the two materials that no longer exist that came in. And the rest of that is built over a marsh swamp. And again, the point that I made last night is that your borings of. Less than eighteen inches don't tell you what's another three feet below. And I just, those roads are holding nicely. And they need to be resurfaced, and when you start to dig into them, it's like. But you're gonna open up Pandora's box here, if, if we don't really know what's. Three to six feet down. And if we prepare to have that contingency plan when we encounter that.
So, uh, can I?
Yeah.
Uh, take it. So, uh, we, we did hear that last night, and, uh, the conversation that, uh. I caught Tom all the way up here, each of our respective jobs. And, uh, and we, we talked through one of, one of the, uh, so we're, we're talking in terms of the risk of this happening. Uh, and one of the mitigations that we as council could do. Uh, given the reduction in cost to the town with all these changes in the plan. Our out-of-pocket expenses are coming down. If there's a specific area of concern that we wanna, uh, poke some more borings into. Uh, to better inform us in advance of the excavation, there is time to do that. And those are relatively cheap, it's pretty cheap insurance, I think it was twenty-five hundred bucks for twelve. Borings the last time you did it, so it would be something that we could pose to council. And see if that was worth the, uh, the information. So.
Well, that, that might be good to do, but additionally, uh. The, the analysis that I don't think we've seen is the difference between all of this. Twenty-year life rebuild versus just a mill and repaid. Uh, we were told about water, and it was drainage, 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 number one priority. And so, you know, we got the drainage taken care of. So what is the life expectancy of that road without this deep dive excavation?
Well, one thing to note is based on those core samples that worked again, there was two core samples. Right here on this road, and that only had two to two and a half inches of asphalt on it. So just doing a surface mill will take all the asphalt out. Um, and if we were to limit it to an inch and a half, then the, the rest that would rattle.
Yeah, you need more than, I understand you need more than that.
So.
What can we do, can we get more asphalt in a, in a lesser cost, lesser invasive process?
One thing, um. In, in my experience, I would say, um, if we go through, if, if it's a contractor mills that out. And say that gravel underneath happens to be good, you know. We could say, don't take it up at all. Compact it down, make sure it's good, um, do the proof roll as required, and then. You know, it could be solid enough to pave right over it and get thicker asphalt, as we're talking about. All the way on that, they will have it ex, you know, a little bit. Um, understand it, but thicker asphalt.
Yeah.
But that is always a field condition that it could be okay.
And is that something, um, Todd, we would put in the bid, cause I think that's something based on last night's conversation. And the feedback is for all the sections, I mean, uh, you know, in anything we do, cause I think one of the concerns. That I'm hearing and as a council member. Uh, being fiduciary responsible, yeah, we've gotta come up with three hundred and thirty-some, and I know it's in the budget for this year. But every year, we don't know what's gonna happen. I mean, NIPSCO could come in the end of this year. And we could be hit with something to have power out here. And we wanna continue to keep all the roads managed, so i- is that like a. Process or something that we put in the bids? What would the protocol be on that?
So, I would still recommend keeping, you know, the quantities and everything else.
Yeah, cause from a dollar amount, we get, we get from a grant, yep.
The, the match that you actually, the money you actually get from NDOT is based on that bid.
Yes, yeah.
So, we wanna make sure we've got everything covered, so that's. You know, if, cause if there wasn't something covered, then it would be a percent down.
But we could potentially run into something at one of the other areas, like Doc, uh, Dr. Ramsey was stating. You know, we might run into something somewhere else unexpectedly that could raise the cost, I mean.
Yes, so. Having as much, uh. Quantity and, and I'm not gonna call it a contingency, but enough. Section in there to where if something were to come up, we've got, say, extra dome. Available to help mitigate that and mitigate that cost, so.
The line down would be a, a beautiful supplement.
Oh, yeah, right, which I hope, you know, and I think that's one of the things we've learned from Third Lake Cove, but. We need to do those assessments, maybe, I don't know what was done before, but at least moving forward. More consistent at those layers, so we know, okay, we need to take more of this out, or we are gonna have to take it all out, or no. We don't have to, depending on, and I'm sure there will be variability even. As, you know, I mean, some place like Subshore that's high and dry might be a little bit different than a place like Quiet Harbor.
And you'll see roads react differently throughout, and you might have one area that looks perfectly fine, and then you pick up the asphalt and see that you do need to excavate more out. You see other areas where asphalt looks terrible, and you, you excavate off the asphalt and it's hard as rock. You know, it's, it's no weird.
No, I think that's great, and the, the protocol, I think, is helpful and good for people to understand.
Uh, and, you know, moving forward, um, whatever. You know, we can, we can scope and design projects in, in the future years. Do whatever the town has for that match, if it is only, you know, if one year it is only two hundred thousand, then, you know. We can make that assessment, you know.
Yeah, I think you're, I think you're getting a little bit ahead of our, you know, outrunning our headlights. In the sense, in the sense that, uh. Uh, what we're gonna be talking about at council, and I encourage everybody to stay if you wanna stay. Uh, is, uh, the affordability. Uh, of the, within the town's budget, if we don't deliberately address. The, the lifespan, and your point about drainage shortages. Is, uh, one of the major, uh, root causes that Todd did describe in November. Um, but it's not just surface water, that actually is, uh, having. A roadbed that absorbs as opposed to sheds water. These are the things that I've learned in working, uh, uh, with DLZ. And other engineering firms, and so, the assessment of the soil needs to be. Uh, is it gonna shed the water? If, if the answer is yes, then that's another. Basis for making the decision that Todd described, which is lead, and. And I think what, uh, what a clear takeaway from that conversation is, Todd's got that criteria in his mind. As he goes around to each of these areas, and it's a field decision as, as Mike and Todd described.
And as you know, here at the lake, it's gonna be a challenge, because as, as those roads give you down. Uh, there's a lot of houses, you can go dig a mailbox hole and eighteen inches down, it's have water. Again, so your water table is right there, and that's a road challenge, as to what base you put in there that wants to keep the road in, in good, good condition. Yeah, you, you talk about overrunning your headlights, I'm gonna take a peek in the rearview mirror if you don't mind, just, just for a second. Oh, was just mentioned, and, uh, DLZ was the engineering firm for. Last night, it was determined there was issues with, clearly quote, with the contractor. I have to ask, who is that contractor? Because if that's the bidding contractor, we need to be aware of it, and we need to have a. Discussion before we say, yeah, let's go with this person again, so who was the contractor?
That was API.
API.
Any other questions if, at your, I know you guys were having a conversation, any other questions that you have?
Um, at the end of last night's meeting after, was I talked to Todd, and I don't know if you've had a chance to. Do any calculations, we were talking about the water volume required to be taken out of the drain over by my property, so. Um, at some point will that be done, so we have some idea. How many liters required, or maybe that water in the lake?
You know, there's, as far as what goes out right now, there's, there's gonna be no change. In the amount of water that's there, so, and, and the way I understand it, it currently does. Take all the water that's there, right?
It, as long as the drainage is open, but the other thing is, there is change taking place. There has been change, the neighbors of the west paved their driveway. Um, my property's gonna have a new garage roof and driveway, the garage roof is there, driveway, but it isn't yet. There's that square footage of water that's gonna be going down through that same pipe, and that's why I'm just curious, you know. I don't want water running down through the yard and up into the garage.
Yeah, so, that, that's the, I'm, I really appreciate you bringing that point up, because. It is very important for the town not to take on the water problems. From a residence activities. And in your situation where you just said, I'm building a new garage and I'm planning to pipe it into that. Existing, uh, drainage system, which already manages. The road, uh, storm runoff adequately, as long as somebody keeps the mud from piling up. And so it's not really, that's not a requirement that the town should take on. To increase the size of that system, to manage the additional runoff from additional downspouts. Uh, coming into it. The town, what the town put in on this design was an effort to, uh. Assist in the conveyance under the road of that water. It was sized larger. For various reasons, but it was not with, uh, a design criteria. To manage the additional load that your new construction is putting on that, that system.
Well, I, you know, I, I'm not an engineer, but to go from a four-inch pipe, it's currently carrying water to twelve. Twelve is probably oversized. And so the question is then, what is the necessary piping that's required to go. Take that water out of the twelve, it's, you know, on the street, and again, keep in mind, this isn't all my water.
No. I really agree, I'm really trying to describe this in many different ways, because we're not connecting. Current state, there is not a problem, as long as there isn't, uh, mud and grass dams. Preventing the water from shedding off the road into either the north terrain or the south. Road right of way. The minimalistic solution for the town's road project would be. To simply put in a passive swale that would be sufficiently sized for the road runoff. Uh, to allow it to dissipate over time, it would just simply be a collector.
Where we're collecting.
And the swale that would be put in, in effectively the lawns that are parallel to the road.
About that much.
There's a five-foot road right of way from the edge of the pavement into each side of the lawns. And that is accessible for the swale. Now, because that probably isn't the most ideal, given all of the stakeholders in that little spot. We were and designed in the ability to convey the water under the road. But it required a partnership for you to hook on to the, uh. Respective basins that were being installed on each side of the road. And, and that makes sense, because it will clearly, uh, allow the water. To dissipate faster, and I think there's benefit to the town for that. But that is not in any way to manage the stormwater runoff. From the new construction.
So you're saying you're gonna run a swell parallel to the road?
Like we're doing all the way down that stretch? That isn't unique, that's, that's part of this design that allows you to get rid of the pipe.
And I think that's one thing, maybe just add those little swell arrows, maybe. On this, maybe that would help, I, wasn't the swell leg- legend a little thing with an arrow or not really?
No, uh, yeah. These wells aren't, aren't transferring the water a long distance, like those ones are, so. The, we've got a call out there.
That's why they're not on there, that's why, yeah.
But yeah, that's why the.
Could you call a retention swell?
Yeah.
Yes.
Under its driveways.
Right.
So they're sized in width and depth to handle whatever, uh, Todd calculates for the stormwater runoff. Uh, we, we, we specified a ten-year storm, uh. You know, which drives you to so many inches per hour, and he knows the area which is, uh, needing to be managed. And the swales sizes are typically, uh, no more than a foot deep and a couple of feet wide, kind of thing. So it's not, it's not overly intrusive, but it is, it's gonna hold, it's a low spot, it's gonna hold the water. And that was the primary way that he was able to eliminate pipes.
Which is great. I think it it is more natural in appearance and I think that's part of, I mean, if we all look up. The quote above us, I think that's what we want. We wanna preserve. What we have and that gives that appearance as well. As opposed to always relying on something that's man made.
And to address some of the concerns that people have about water quality.
That's the thing, everybody, we wanna keep Clear Lake Clear Lake. And we've all seen a lot of. I mean, this winter it looks fabulous. You could see straight through to the bottom with the ice, but you will see that in a couple of months.
This discussion that's occurring in seventy-two, is that same methodology applied in either fifty-two or fifty-four? I'm not sure where that line is that goes from the road to the lake. Similar, different design.
Yep.
And do we know the size of that line? And I I think it's in lot fifty-four. That beyond the drawing, right?
The one that keeps going.
And that's gonna accommodate those new, those two new uh lots that the management commission. Approved in the drainage going into the swell headed towards fifty-four.
Uh, we required as a condition of building that they install their phone.
Yeah, uh, cause that's part of their subdivision uh controls. Okay. Um, yeah, Dan said that was part of the subdivision control that they they're gonna be required to have a drainage before they develop on that.
Alright, thanks for the reflection.
And again, that's the residents.
Okay, sorry about that. Oh, working on it. Okay, I think we're done with that conversation.
If you wanna continue with this stretch of roadway at. Cottage twenty-two, twenty-four, and I don't know what slide number is, I have page two. We we have what I referred to as as crosses or on the catch basins and you said they're gonna be stubbed off. It begs question, why why have this? If this possible future use, then why don't we put them on all catch basins for possible future use? Uh, every addition to something, again, it adds cost. You have a straight catch basin, it's one cost. You start putting uh stem on it. It adds cost to it for future use. What do, what do we know? What don't we know here?
Well, the one on the west side actually does have drains coming from the west. So when when that resident and the one to the west of that. Put their new driveways in and I'm trying to think when they did that, probably two years ago. They put in drains right there in the yard to alleviate some of that. Problem that they were having. So they brought it down and just ended it in the air hanging over that.
That's that smaller G two pipes.
Right, and then Mickey, who is at twenty. She has one that goes under her driveway and then just stops as well. So both of those could be connected to. To the either all sides of that T. So those are gonna be used and then the one on the south side picks up. The old one because I don't think anybody knows where that one even goes. I mean, quite honestly.
The one that pointed it towards the driveway or just twenty-two's driveway, yes. Well, there's a catch basin there right now.
Correct, that the one that got covered up was added.
In. I'll look it up and let you know. But that was, there was a French drain and then the catch basin.
Now, the catch basin was there, they put the French drain over the top of it, trying to hide it. And that didn't work because it sucked all the sand in from underneath the driveway pavers. That's the reason the driveway collapsed. And then the new owners, uh, Brian and MNC Trenton come out and. They pulled it up and said, um, somebody buried a drain. So that's.
The year just came to me is twenty twenty.
Yeah, so so the drain was originally there.
So the French drain went over the top of it?
And you didn't seal it correctly and that's the reason why it collapsed.
And that is in the, that is in the towns.
Yeah, I I brought that print so I can check it out.
Let me pull this up.
Yeah, so I also promised last night that I would, I have documentation on some of the stuff that. Happened and this is why I got involved with all the drainage stuff for the reason why quiet harbor back in the day. Um, I stopped it and you'll see why here. So one of the videos will be water runoff coming off seven hundred. So, yeah, that's, that's the photo of twenty-four and twenty-two. That it said never floods and that it's not this, that does flood.
Oh, yeah. I don't think it was a never floods. I think it was about, I never said never, you will find that.
It wa- it wasn't you, but somebody said never floods, so they've seen, I can tell you that.
Uh, what video? I don't wanna have the ba- the audio so.
So this is, that's twenties mailbox. This is what it looked like when I drove her. What year was it? Two thousand seventeen was when this first, I think this video was. But again, I will collaborate that this happens whenever we learn, right? And see, if I don't know if you noticed that or picked it up, but this is before. They painted those driveways. So it wasn't that increase because of paved. It was actually this way for several years. And that's when I started working with the DNR and Army Corps and Conservancy. This is what we dealt with uh seven hundred. So this is Andrew here. This, this one down at the front door. This comes across. This is what the lawns. This is the reason why I stopped quiet harbor because. After this event, I went back and I took pictures of. What happens to seven hundred east when you do something like this that revolves. Stone and and bedding underneath this stuff. There's no way I'm gonna hit quiet harbor. About hitting this. So that's the reason why I went with or went to the county. And got about what uh Jennifer. And it took the county in almost two years to get this done. It was the first year they were doing the study, the second year they got the funding and finally got it done.
Well, that catch basin involved going in now, man.
We had them do is, I don't know if you ever noticed it, but when we did that. Center side where the field is, it's rated a giant catch there to try to stop some of that sudden that was coming in there.
Doing much good because that, you know, the channel is brown after the rain.
So the title. So what you've got right here, this year sixteen is about right here, heads up under the shed. There's the twelve that goes over to the south. Which goes over to the catch basin in between my house and my neighbor's house.
And Brett falls there.
Yeah, so again, this. Again, we go back to the drainage that BLZ talks about in the interviews. I know, I know, this wouldn't get worked. Flooding like this. This is only one event that I just have to go out and walk through, so.
There was one more, do you remember? I don't either.
So, yeah, you can see that goes all the way up.
I'm sorry. I'll go back.
But that goes all the way up to twenty-four driveway and all the way up to twenty's driveway. So it totally engulfs twenty-two when that happens.
I can uh see if anybody on Zoom has additional questions. Alright, uh, we're gonna um see if any of our Zoom participants have questions. Uh, I think uh Brian, you're at the top of the list. Anything additional?
I don't have any more thi- any more to say about it, just uh Colin Darren was talking about with those pictures in that video, I think uh. I have a couple, just since I've moved in there now, just uh over two years since twenty twenty. Uh, when I moved in there and that not to that degree. Uh, has happened three, maybe four times, but a significant one happened where with. Freezing and rain and everything else where it was at least five inches of ice all the way across there. For that base about that same area from my driveway twenty-two uh all the way up to the neighbor's driveway at twenty. Uh, and I know even several times my wife came home for probably about six days straight and had a problem getting in the driveway, but nevertheless, that was definitely a hazard.
Thank you. Tim, you're next. Anything additional tonight?
Nope, I'm all good. Thank you.
You're welcome. And Bob, I know uh I received an email from you uh with a list of questions. Are there anything? Is there anything new or or I know your request was specific to have them answered in writing? Bob, you're muted.
Uh, the uh. The video was very uh in in informational because I. Um, had never seen flooding like that in that area. So, I mean, pictures, pictures don't lie. And uh, I mean, we've seen flooding like that in our area as well. And um, you know, the result of that is myself and my neighbor. Uh, we, I installed two drains, my neighbor installed one. Uh, both of my drains have six inch tile that run through my seawall into the lake. My neighbor installed a twelve inch tile. And we had flooding in two thousand and two. I think I've shown you pictures of that that look very similar, if not worse than what we just saw. And since we've installed those three, my two drains and his one drain. You know, the end result was that we didn't have flooding on the road. But the reason we installed the drains was to prevent flooding in our residential property. The end result was that we also resolved the flooding on the road. So, you know, I think the issue here still is historically. That the residents took the first line of responsibility in fixing flooding issues. And then the town would take on the second uh responsibility. But I don't know that we're going to ever install anything that's gonna resolve a flooding issue like what what we just saw on the video. I mean, that's like a storm surge. And I don't think what we're installing now is probably going to handle that.
That's a question for Todd.
Cause my my main concern is that when we have a flood like that, what we're running off into the lake. Uh, there's all, there's all possibilities of what's going in there besides just silt and mud. Is you're taking fertilizer, you're taking anything that's on the road, anything that's coming off of those farm fields. Uh, anything that's coming off of the conservation land. When I think about that retention pond and what's that stagnant water. And what's going to be on the surface is the worst stuff. And that's the first thing that's going to flow through those pipes and come into the ditch through twenty-two and twenty-four. And come right into the lake. So whatever we can do to slow that runoff from uh reaching the lake. Uh, I think that's, that's what our number one priority should be. And I'm one of the people who said that I've never seen flooding like that at twenty-two and twenty-four. And that's true, I'd never seen that. Uh, but I have now and it's, it's uh very shocking.
I will say one, to your point, uh, one thing is we would. Um, we have planned to put a bunch of riprap there on the north side to help slow that water down. Take out some of the sediments and 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 filter that water as it's coming in there. Um, to try and help, one of your points there, Bob. Um, as far as handling it, um, the. Based on, you know, the shed area calculations and um. Everything we received from the county and the conservancy to the north. That's why these were sized as they are to handle um that sort of water. Mike, anything else?
Uh, I believe they calculated what fifty year storm was the velocity and water that was calculated to go through those pipes. We're talking twenty-two now, right?
Yes.
So the film that we, that Bob was uh reacting to was uh coming down the open swell. By there, so in quiet harbor. And we know that there's two fifteen inch tiles that that are supplying water. And and from that video, it appeared to be pretty much what they could carry. Or at the time it was a one, the one fourteen, but it was coming over the road. Now it's two fifteens. Uh, and the question is, um, can it, as it goes. You'll size a swell properly. There's absolutely no hope in my mind that we would ever filter out the mud, so. Okay, in in that scenario, it's running too fast to allow anything to.
Yep.
Settle out. But um, will the, will the receiving end in this design? Convey the water or will it allow it to go into the properties like we were seeing?
So the, there's always the. A large storm and if you were to size for. You know, a large, large storm, the cost would be, you know, exponential. Um, so. This should, this would handle most, most rains that would. Most rains that would, that would, that would come, there's always the potential of, you know, that home storm. To go over.
So what are the two pipe diameters were, were using the existing fifteen?
Yep.
And the new one is what?
An eighteen.
Eighteen, so that's. Balancing the two fifteens plus the additional water that would just naturally fall on the area leading up to that point.
By opening up that swell, you know. And regrading that swell and opening up the bottom, that's allowing for the water to slow down. Just so you can spread out, it's not being confined. And so that should help slow that water down as it comes down to those, that spot.
And it's also going to be a great on top of that structure, which then. When the pipes, the inlet pipes start getting overwhelmed, the water starts trying to go over the top into the structure, push. Central, it pushes the water faster than what you grab you with one way just allowed. Yeah, like planes.
You know, what we're, what we're doing here is developing a great case to collaborate with our conservancy. With these, with the farm field to the west. And that's where the majority of this water is coming from. They'd be the point to, and they've worked with farmers routinely to see if they couldn't enhance a grassy buffer. That again would work as a filter deeper into the field now, going into the field is money to the farmer, you know, so but. But if anybody could do this, the conservancy could and certainly I'll take it to the conservancy, we could point. This corner out, there's only one just in the corner there, but to see if they couldn't begin a dialogue with, with the local farmer there, like we all know. And to get a filter system.
Maybe you could share your video with John.
The problem with that, that field over there, and I agree, that's the reason why when I was working with Jennifer from the county, but they put that. Catch right there. If you look at how that field is shaped. It's not what's closest to us that are coming at us through the hayfields, the barn area. Third of the field comes actually down into the north and then comes back to the east. And that actually goes through a hayfield and then the grass.
Those are twelve in, in that.
Still is moving at a high rate, I don't know what you could do. Unless you build a pond in that hayfield to hold it.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good case for the conservancy to start a dialogue, is there's other options? It's out of that article, it's out of that of our town.
Right, naturally, I was working on the twenty two to four. Right at the back end of that open ditch is the perfect low lying area to make another catch back there to hold everything one last time. That comes from everything from the north through the tile into that area. I mean, it's all those dead trees that are sitting back there and you might as well just use it for something useful like draining the water before it gets there. So, you know, and then keep up, so I don't know if the conservancy picked it up or not.
Just Bob, Bob, anything else?
I think. You know, our first filter, the first filter should always be what the impact is going to be on the, the, the lake. Of anything that we do in, in a way of a resolution here. You know, my, my first priority always is that without a safe and clean recreational lake. Nothing else really matters. So anything we can do to keep that water from reaching the lake, I'm in favor of it. You know, but the solution certainly isn't to run drains along seven hundred. So that all that water that comes off of the farm field runs down pipes and directly into the lake. I would rather have flooding on my property so that the water has a chance to seep down through the ground. Versus running it all directly into the lake. And taking everything along that with it that comes off of the, off of those fields. So. You know, once in a thirty year storm. And the challenges that we're facing, I mean, where, where do we draw the line? On trying to prevent that kind of a flood, which. Like I said before, I mean, what the pictures that we saw there, I don't know what we can do. Other than trying to keep the water. Somewhere else than running to the lake, but you know. Nature is, the reason we have a lake is because water runs downhill and it comes into the lake and. If we live at the bottom of one of those hills, we have to deal with water on an occasional, on occasion. So, I mean, I still have a little bit of flooding in my area at times, but. For the, for the most part, my drains are, are handling that and I've had flooding there just as bad as the pictures that we just saw. But I don't have drainage to the extent of what we're talking about it between twenty two and twenty four. What, what I have, Dan, is I have a, a six inch tile. That runs through my seawall. And it has a pop off, like a pressure valve at the, uh, two feet beyond my, or and back on my seawall. That if the water gets too high inside that pipe, if it, if it can't handle that much water, then it comes up through that pop off valve. And flows over my seawall. And I have my downspouts running into that tile, I allowed my neighbor to run her downspouts into my tile. And for, for a huge part, that has handled the drainage on our property. And you know, the point that I always make is that the cleanest water we can, we can run to the lake is what comes out of our gutters and our downspouts. And off of our driveways, if we can capture that water before it crosses the road. And run it underneath and tie it into the drain through our seawall. That's a big, to me, that, that, that's a major solution. And we've seen people who have done that and we've seen people who have not. And where they have not, those driveways become water ramps. And they run the water straight across the road and in some cases into other people's property. And then they have to deal with it. Some of the construction that has happened on West Clear Lake and those LA properties. Has added to the, to the runoff issues there.
Well, fortunately enough, the construction has been done like we and my na, both neighbors. Fortunately enough, the construction that has happened on those for me and both of my neighbors with putting in the driveways. We have met the town standards and made sure that there wasn't a flow directly to the street, even for mine, which is large. From basically the garage to the back garage, that actually all runs backwards into the west, so it doesn't even go towards the creek. Going, it's running to towards the street. Is basically from the front garage forward and then it has the little trough there in the front that the town required. Which then funnels it to the west actually and not towards the creek. So there's nothing happening with me and my neighbors that are actually. Putting it right out to the street.
Yeah, you're. The previous owner of your property, that driveway was, I believe, stone?
Correct, and that was actually all sloped to the street.
Yeah, and that driveway used to flood frequently. When he built that second LA structure in the back, that was actually in an historic wetlands area. I remember when that was built and I thought, boy, he's going to have water issues unless he does something with the drainage to run it away from his foundation. And we know who we're talking about here. He did most of the work himself, which was not a good idea. And which is why you're dealing with some of the issues that you're dealing with. But I'm talking about the garages that were built. And I don't have the numbers, but the ones that sit, wait, they're relatively new, there's like three or four of them that sit up high.
Yeah, the forty six, forty, forty six fifty maybe.
Next to Yoder, next to Yoder, the green property.
Yeah, there's like three of them in a row.
Two blue and one green, I think.
Those are examples that what I'm talking about is that we have to really consider. Putting some regulations in place that people put drains at the bottom of their driveway. So that water doesn't run across the road.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I agree, and. You know, anytime that we built, anytime that we put in concrete driveways, we're eliminating opportunity for water to soak into the ground. Anytime we cut down trees, we're eliminating. A system that's in place to hold soil and to soak in water. So the challenge in Quiet Harbor, the way I see it, is the area that they're going to build those LA garages in, I'm assuming they are. That ground was intended as a septic system. And it failed the perk test. So that, the reason it failed the perk test, that tells you that that ground is not going to hold water for very long. Not very much is, not very much water is going to soak into that ground, it's going to run across the road. And I think that's something we need to take a look at as, as new construction plans are put in place there. But that's going to create additional runoff in Quiet Harbor. So I, I don't know if what we're putting in place there is going to handle that additional runoff, that's, that's my. That's, that's my question.
Hey Bob, this is Darren, yeah, when we looked at that, and this was even before we were doing the calculations for. The road, this is back when we were dividing that up, we looked at that or I looked at that for. And I've got the calculation I can send you, but those two drains will handle the, you know, what they call commons area. The way they said right now.
Right. So, so Darren, so your belief is that if we improve the swell. What would that be on the? West side of the road? On the, on the non-residential side of the road, you're going to out, you're going to improve that swell. And you're going to then rely on that to handle the runoff coming down the hillside off of seven hundred?
Yeah.
Plus the additional runoff from your driveways?
Now, seven hundred will be taken up by the, the open ditch.
And then he's referring to the length of road, seven hundred behind the lots.
We haven't had, we haven't had any flooding issues in there other than there's a couple of low pockets in there that, that hold the water, but I mean, as far. As far as the two drains that are there in existence right now, they've handled everything that we've ever had. The only time that it didn't is when that, that second fifteen inch tile was not in on the other side. And the problem was that. The, the road is lower than the ground around it, so basically it used Quiet Harbor as a racetrack and fast tracked it down to the bottom. And at that point, it, it couldn't handle that excess water, but then you're draining all of Penner's farm.
Yeah, because you have, it doesn't take a very heavy rain. For you to have pooling. In a couple of side yards. And I, I apologize, I don't know the addresses. But as I walk by, I can see that there's water standing in the side yards and a, a couple of your properties there, Darren.
Yeah, that's, that's between Tom Billings and Janet Nelson, that is a low pocket area and. They really need to tile that yard and I've talked to Janet about that several times, so I think the kids are probably going to do that.
See, that's, that's the other thing that's happening, and it happened to me, is that. The new construction that's going in, they, they typically will put in piles in areas like we have in, in low lying areas. And they raise the foundation and then they grade the lot so that it's higher than the neighbors. And so then the. The neighbor has to deal with ru, with water running against the foundation of their house. Because the, you know, the new construction is higher, so. And we are always fighting, we're always fighting water issues because it's, it's a lake. And I just think we need to be real practical in how we go about addressing it.
Yeah, I mean, for, for, you know, this conversation, basically the old common area is good and self-divisioned. So when it comes to the, you know, the LR side of it, yeah, there, there are a couple of people that really should do some drainage stuff. But you know, that's, again, that's up to them.
Well, that's their responsibility.
Right.
Yeah. But, you know, I, I. You know, I, I guess I want to finish by saying I want to compliment. What you guys have done in trying to address some of the concerns of the community. Because I think what you're coming up with in utilizing the swales instead of extensive drains and instead of extensive piping. I, I applaud that because I think that's the right way to go. I still think we can look at some areas where we may be able to borrow some money. With a little less extensive drainage. And maybe apply it someplace else to fix issues that are going to come up. Because we're going to run into some things that are going to surprise you and we're going to need the money to be able to deal with those.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Nobody else, nobody else on Zoom? Those are the things, but because I wanted to go back to the previous suggestion to talk to the conservancy, so. I think that's a great suggestion, I can say, being on the board and being a charge of water quality. For the conservancy. That we are currently studying the nutrient loads coming in from all the ditches. That is step one to understanding the magnitude of the problem. We have a set of requirements that, that establishes the goal that we would like to. Move that water back to and nutrient loads and. And we are putting together a strategy for grants. Well, I see just recently received a little over a million dollar grant. Taking the same approach as what we're taking to work with farmers on the things that we're discussing tonight, so. And Dan, let's say others, there was a few other people I think felt that want to speak. Yeah, just wanted to, oh, great, thanks. So I've got that one, George.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, let's go back. Bill, Anna, I see that you're on.
Yeah, can, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, great. So my question was along the lines of where Bob was and I just couldn't tell from the print details. On the various drain pipes that are being proposed, the twelve, eighteen inches and, and a couple of different spots. Yeah, what, what, what were the? Design intent to slow the, the water down in, into the lake has, as the discussion went very, very well, I thought. Needing to manage the speed at which the water goes into the lake because the runoff is really typically highly contaminated, I just couldn't tell from the print if there was any. Provisions to slow the water down through those pipes. So that it would leach into the ground rather than direct feed into the lake.
Is, are you talking specifically more on the, the Quiet Harbor area?
Well, any, any one of the points, but yeah, that, that's, that's one of them, really, on, on all the major points where the drainage was, I just couldn't pick out, you know, there's described as a beehive, but I'm not sure that's really a device that um would slow the water down or allow it to filter down into the ground prior to direct dump into the lake.
No, that, that would be the point of those swales is, you know, for example, the the one there on Quiet Harbor where it's going to be a grassy swale, it's gonna be wide, be able to allow that water to, to spread out and slow down, the grass will help slow it down a little bit. Catch some of the sediment. Um we've got rip route in there as well to slow that water down and catch the, catch that sediment before it comes into the pipe and then goes to the lake.
So the design intent is that uh the various swales that are there are there to control uh um the speed, the, the uh leaching into the ground, once it hits the pipe, it's, it's gonna be a direct feed. That, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the other question I have, and maybe it goes back to um some history on the presentations for um that DLZ presented a little bit on the financial side. Um you know, there was a a page that DLZ presented back in November, and I think the theme has been carried on at that um, you know, there's a a fair amount of uh cost savings on the uh proposed approach versus the traditional approach of just milling off over time. A- and don't get me wrong by my point I'm gonna make here, because I, I think we are going down the right path to improve the uh the construction methods that we're using, and it will give us longer life. Ho- however, um I couldn't really discern, there's one um sum that we looked at, I think it was six hundred ninety thousand dollars over the life versus five hundred and ten or something of, of that nature. But it wasn't clear whether there was any kind of discounted cash flow that was performed. Uh was there a, a cash flow performed on that calculation?
Um trying to think back to that slide. Um for, for, for me, Bill, would you describe what discounted cash flow means?
Well, it's just taking the time value of money into account.
It was.
So, so for example, the, the, it was the, the so I, I, I can, I, I ran just a, a fairly straightforward calculation, the one uh option that shows six hundred and ninety thousand dollars spent over life versus five hundred and ten over the life and actually, the six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, I think, comes out to about four eighty in today's dollars. And the five-ten comes out to like five, five oh five. So I, I call it a wash in close enough, depending on the cost of capital. So really, my point is, we just need to be careful not to oversell that we're saving the community, you know, large sums of money. You know, up to including showing the charts of two million dollars in perpetuity. Again, we've carried that same calculation all the way through from what I could tell, and I, I just think we're overselling the proposal. The proposal to me is sound from an engineering perspective and for lake quality, but financially, it's probably closer to a break even.
Thanks, Bill. Yeah. And I have no reason to disagree with your, your logic there because uh to my knowledge, we haven't used time value on the loose balance.
But one other point I make too, that is that, you know, we're at the moment looking at, you know, the nine point nine miles of road that we have a- around the lake. And essentially proposing, from what I can see, that we have the same construction standards throughout this, the entire uh road system that we have. Um and as we've talked here tonight, and I'm sure even last night, we know we're gonna run into issues and probably have to spend more money in some areas than others. In my mind, we've got
That's fine.
Very roads, although seven hundred is really not ours, but the, a, a road that really feeds into the perimeter. And then we've got a handful of residential roads. A- and for me, and, and I would put Quiet Harbor in a residential road and Terrace Drive and Cove and, you know, a number of others. I, I really believe that those roads have much less traffic, much less fatigue than the main roads. And we could likely have a different design standard. Again, once we do some core samples, we may have to completely scrap my theory here, but I really think we ought to look real hard at some of those residential areas with limited uh traffic, which results in fatigue, because, because fatigue is a function of load and frequency. And those residential roads just don't get the frequency. They have the potential to get the same load, but not the frequency. So we have the potential, I, I believe, to, as we get into some of those residential construction areas, to probably spread our precious funds a little further per mile. And that's all for me, so appreciate the time.
Yes, I appreciate those comments, Bill, particularly the last one is on the list uh or uh for the committee that, that I'm proposing we form to help us make um the decisions. I, I feel strongly that we're at a, a point where we have information that might drive a, a different approach on the way we look at our roads and manage our roads. But certainly, as you pointed out, um there may not be the, the projection of savings. Um and also uh there is certainly different cri- there should be a set of criteria by which we look at each road segment uh to decide uh when and what to do. And that is, uh, that is part of uh what I would uh uh throw at the, the road committee to figure out for us. So thank you.
Yeah, agree, thanks.
Thank you.
Uh who else? We have Beth and, and Chris on the line. Do you have any comments? Okay, uh hearing them, we'll move on to Laura. Laura, do you have any comments online? The beautiful pictures. Okay, I'll return, I'll return to the room. Any, any follow-up comments?
Just I uh I keep quite a bit of feedback regarding West Clear Lake from uh Cottage Ten through Cottage Ninety-eight, which is at the bridge. The, the channel there sort of by our house. Uh the concern is that that road was a pa- phaser rating of a five. And there are fourteen road segments, I'm told, that were less than five. And so the proposal is, we're going to tear out a road five and replace it. You know, it's sort of like repainting your house when it doesn't need to be painted. It's a, a waste, and we're doing this to catch maybe three drain issues along the way. Um how do we handle tearing out a phaser five? How do we justify it? So.
I know, I just wanna, I, I just looked at the road asset inventory list, and it's, there are three road segments, uh sorry, six road segments with a phaser rating of three out of twenty-two.
I, I live there with one that's a one. There's some threes and some fours. And I don't have my homework with it, I just have the recap.
Okay, so you were including fours.
Oh, yeah, plus a five.
All right, thanks. And there is a one, yep, so.
Yeah, there's fourteen of them.
All right, thanks.
So you know, I sort of scratched our heads and how did the five get ahead of four, threes and a one? And now that we're, and, and we married it, so, so we have to deal with it. And so we're going to completely rip out a five. One for, it's just sort of about half a mile.
As what was talked about previously, not only does the phaser rating take into account conditional river, so does core samples that were done. Um you know, the phaser rating is only a surface and visual indication. It's like I was on the first one of, of indicating the pavement there. Hope I can stop you there, I understand that, but the core sample was done after the crossing. So again, we're sort of looking at the review there, talking about core samples. Um.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, this, this is certainly not answered, George. However, I agree that we need to, and I've put it on the list for the road committee, to look at how we prioritize our road projects, because this one is clearly a little bit of a head scratcher. And um
And the community's a little bit flawed here as to what's wrong.
Yeah, and I think we, I think sometimes dealing comes from just admitting you, you've made a mistake possibly. Where you've got a weakness in your process and needed to jump on it and fix it. And that's why I, that's why I've included it in the list for the uh road committee to do.
Between our common council and uh CLZ, who made that decision? As to what we're going to prioritize and take the community crossing grant application? Somebody did.
Well, I know that, like I said, Quiet Harbor's been on there since seventeen. I know that I've had the the drainage there between twenty-two and twenty-four sometimes. So I mean, that's, that appeared, disappeared in every map.
And that's a three, and that's okay.
Yeah. Not far as the rest of it.
I'm just curious, who made, who decided on West Clear Lake from Cottage Ten to Ninety-eight?
Oh, I, I don't, I don't recall at, off the top of my head right now. But it's, it included twenty-two. The fight between twenty-two and twenty-four that's been on there for, since, what'd you say, twenty nineteen, seventeen? Seventeen. I, I can't answer that right off, right now, apologies.
Nothing else?
Do we have a hand up?
There's a comment.
Yeah, the comment was from Beth. Uh and Chris saying that the audio wasn't working, and we agree with Hannah's comments, Bill Hannah's comments, sorry. Thank you.
Okay, um going once, going twice, actually, let me stop. Uh do you want us to look at where the coring samples were? Molly, you had asked for that last night.
Yeah, you've got that map. I think that gives some perspective.
Yeah, we do. Um if you pull up the November.
If you followed up on what I, I didn't.
It's on super the November uh presentation by DLZ. It's that one, yes. Kind of fun having everything on, on the web.
It's uh
Next slide. Next slide, there we go. And so there were twelve, uh the number one starts in Quiet Harbor on the south side, and then it works around the lake. And then the next slide has the actual results, but we'll just I'm not sure what your question is.
So it was last night when we were talking about phaser and the corings, and I think you know, there's some conversation that you might do a coring in one location and it might be different somewhere else. This map just gives a perspective, like there were two in Quiet Harbor, which is, I don't know how the distance there, but then there were also two done on the proposed um what is that, project three, the, you know, so I think it just shows, you know, yes, we might have to do additional corings in some of those when you're looking at the stretches, or if you look at the lake view to the bridge, how many were done in that area? It just gives the residents a perspective if they, since that conversation came up. And obviously, on the roads that we're not tackling with this particular grant, but that the road committee would be looking at. You know, you look at South Shore, you've got, you know, a mile there and you've got two done, so there will be other. So that's, that's all, Dan, just so people can see where they were done and that those twelve that we paid for were not all necessarily in where these three projects are being proposed. They might want to take this slide and even put it in as, move it into the newer deck somewhere as a backup slide.
Well, good. Okay, so uh why don't uh I, I take an opportunity to uh review some of the action items that I collected over the two days of discussion as a means of getting the, the stage, uh and we can transition to council. That's a meaningful focus. Okay. Uh from last night, I took uh a way that we need to have a more deliberate and, and definitive plan to provide access to homes during construction. And uh that access being both residence and emergency vehicles. Uh from last night, um in our uh conversation about Clear Lake Cove and things not being really uh executed with plan, I took the action to look at how we will do more frequent uh inspections to make sure the uh as-built equals as-designed uh uh approach. Uh from last night, I took uh an action just to revisit the Uh, from last night, I took, uh, an action just to revisit the um, discharge calculations, uh, between twenty-two and twenty-four West Clear Lake Drive to see if the twenty-one inch is required, or can we extend the, the eighteen inch out to the lake? Um, I took a action to talk to our legal counsel about, uh, residents' access to, uh, pipes that, uh, the town invested installed in the ground in the purpose of, uh, conveying the street drainage. Uh, I've got an action to see if there's any creative way that we can stop construction between the summer months, July and August, although I'm, uh, wouldn't hold your fry. And I've got an action, um, to follow up with, uh, the shingles at seventy-two to, uh, understand if, if it's of the interest for the town to convey that water, uh, to connect to their, uh, pre-existing and new uh, drainage lines, or whether the, the, a passive approach is the, the way to go. Uh, I think that's it. So anybody have anything that I may have missed? Okay.
I, I do just, I think, and maybe I missed it, I was packing up some things. It's just the context of the financial, what if we do do more of the milling and less of the taking it all the way down, what that, um, financial implication could be, because I think that does tie into many of the things that you just shared, Dan, from eligibility and downtime, I guess, as I would, I, I don't know what you want to call it, um, to having, having our roads torn up. But still do it in, at quality perspective.
Dan, and there's also a question coming back, what are residents who are undertaking major building, under, undertaking major building projects, estimate one-time contribution or remain, and it's not that there isn't a difference. Um, their activity accelerates.
Do you have a way of capturing that in front?
Uh, I do, actually.
Thank you for that comment.
I think it's logged in Zoom two, and everyone that also attended, I have the ability to go back together, just in case.
Okay, so while, uh, I think we're pretty much, uh, at a point of conclusion for the public Q and A. I do want to just personally thank everybody for the time and effort to, uh, review the plans. Uh, come with very constructive comments and questions. I think we've all grown, uh, together in understanding. Uh, and, uh, and with, uh, a successful, uh, council vote on the recommended road plan will, will learn more and, uh, grow even further, so thank you very much. Uh, I want to start transitioning to the council.
Yeah. Yeah. I didn't keep. Yeah. Yes. Yeah.
Hopefully we'll remember it.
That's okay. Yeah, it's, yeah. Yeah, there's. Yeah. Yeah.
Nice, everybody's.
Oh, yes, yeah.
See if I can get one first. Man, Jen's here. Did you just grab?
You're late.
All right, I'd like to call the reporter, the team, speak everywhere in state first, first regular schedule council meeting. All right, uh, item three, Zoom instruction, Robert?
Uh, good evening, everyone, um, just bringing you that around, uh, Zoom, but if you have a question, um, at the appropriate time, go to the reactants. Pour them at the bottom of your computer and raise your hand, or use the comment or the chat section, and we'll try to get to you at a reasonable time. And then for everyone that's here, um, there are speakers in the ceiling, so if we're talking, make sure we keep it really low so that way their folks on Zoom can hear, okay?
All right, we have a very full schedule tonight, and we're taking into account some of the recommendations from the public uh, for future meetings on during consent agendas, but tonight, we, uh, we're looking at possibly doing a switch through the agenda, we're gonna open it up here to publicly to make sure that we get to the stuff that you want to hear tonight, um, so we're gonna do a little agenda rearranging, and then we'll probably reconvene tomorrow night to finish this up, just because we're still far behind. Anyway, um. I've heard a tiny motion.
Yes, um, Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, make a motion to move items eight and nine up ahead of nine, uh, number seven. So that would put unfinished business, new business, ahead of monthly reports. I would also entertain moving nine A to the end of new business.
Jordan, I'll second that motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Same sign, motion carries. Uh, also entertain a motion.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion, uh, to set a reconvene time, knowing that the, uh, uh, the agenda is, is quite full. I would, uh, uh, I would set the, uh, conclusion time at ten PM this evening, and a reconvene from four tomorrow, starting at six PM.
I'll second that, Molly.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Same sign, motion carries. Everybody, you're open it up to.
Oh, yes, no, I'll make another kind of open up for public comment on any, uh, uh, not, notifying council of any, uh, specific agenda items that, uh, public member may want to hear.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Jordan, I'll second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All the same signs. So, to the public, is there anything that anybody's dying to hear up front?
How about online? Anybody online? Okay. Hearing none, I would make a motion to close public comment.
Motion, you want to say one?
It's Molly, I'll second that.
Second, all of them, favorite, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. All right. Moving on, item five, election of officers. We have the election of the president, the vice president, the secretary, and then, uh, department appointment. So first on the list is for council president, I would open up the floor for nomination.
This is Brendan Foster, I will nominate Aaron, you continue as president of town council. I would second that.
That's a motion and a second. Do I have any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. All those in favor of Aaron Thorpe being president, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carries. Motion carries. Uh, item two, vice president. Open up the floor for nomination.
This is Brent Sluster. I would nominate Molly to continue on her role as vice president.
I would second that nomination.
I have a motion on second. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations. All those in favor of Molly remaining a vice president, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Most of the carries. Now everybody's favorite one, council secretary. I'll open up the floor for nominations.
I'll nominate. Striker.
Brent, I will second that nomination.
I have a motion and a second. Any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close nominations. All those in favor of Nathan being secretary, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. All right, item four, department appointments. We have infrastructure.
So I would, I would love to continue on infrastructure and along with Darren. Those are my nominations.
Have any other nominations?
Carrots.
All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of us, Ben and I, remaining on infrastructure, signify by the same aye.
Aye.
All the same signs. Motion carries. Next item, H R. Open up the floor for nine.
I'd like to nominate George, Vicky. If you'd be good.
Yeah, I would second that.
Any other nominations? All those in favor of George, H R, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign.
At state.
Motion carries. Uh, Marshall and Fire.
I'd like to nominate Brent to continue as Marshall and fire point of contact.
Motion, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Any other nomination? All of them favors signify by saying aye for Brent.
Aye.
Aye. All the same sign. Motion carries. That's one we have economic development and region three A.
I would nominate Molly.
Both of those are going together? No, I think those are.
Uh, come on. I would nominate, I would, let me make a complaint. Let me just make it.
Oh, how often are the economic development meeting? Is that during the day?
Tuesday.
I don't.
Every third, every third Tuesday from. Three o'clock.
I.
Three thirty.
Can I zoom in?
Yeah.
Okay.
You can zoom in. They adjusted it and you can zoom in, you can't zoom in like consecutively.
Yeah. I might need a backup on that because that's in the middle of the workday.
I would be willing to be your backup on that.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I will second Molly being nominated and being her backup. If she reason. You know, with fire.
Okay.
All right, I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. All right, the last one under that item is plan.
Mr. President, could we potentially do a budget?
Could we do a budget?
Not do the budget, but have two individuals work on the budget, just instead of waiting until the end of the year. We can do that as one of our department appointments.
For that. And just.
Well, we typically have two people work on the budget and I'd like to just take that, manage that now while we're already doing apartment appointments.
Okay.
And I'd like to nominate Dan and George.
I would second that nomination.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries. That's a good judgment. Moving on, items five, playing commission. We have a vacancy out of.
Yeah, so. I'll preface this nomination on the advantages in which we enjoyed last year by staffing this. Appointment out of the town staff and. With the consideration of that, carrying that forward into this year, I would nominate Roger Rogers.
Go ahead and second. Who is currently asked questions, president? Who is currently on from council and when does their dates expire?
Thank you, Dan and George are on their fire for this year. Have a motion, do I have a second? I'll second that motion.
Nominations. Yes. I would.
Well, we have a motion and a second. I'm waiting, sorry. Move through that first. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Nathan. Roll call vote. Yes. There was, there was a vote. Yeah. George, no. Brent. Stan.
Dan. Yeah. All.
No.
Thank you.
All right.
Nathan go, needs to vote now. As a tiebreaker.
Right. So you have to decide if you want, if the motion on the table is for God, if you take the plane commission decision. Councils vote for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, moving on. Next item, approval of monthly reports. You all received minutes from December twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. Are there any additions or corrections to that? If not, I've never taken a motion to approve.
One's dramatical error, I find, you're a quick, there is a period between us. Page four, page four. There it is. Where Todd from D L Z was talking, second line in the paragraph, there's just a period between the C and the K. And back. Just a dramatical error. Now I would make a motion to approve with the grammatical air correction.
All right, I have a motion, or a second.
I would second that.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. All right, item B, minutes from January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. There any additions or corrections? If not, I've never taken a motion to approve.
It's Molly, I'll make a motion to approve the January seventeenth meeting minutes.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All the same sign. Motion carries. All right, December and January voucher register and warrant, Nathan.
Yeah, for both of you, they don't need to use Nathan Stryker. I was appointed at the beginning of this month. Uh, or beginning of January. For those who don't know me, I came, my family first came to Philly in nineteen eighty-four. I grew up in Portland, but I've been coming up to the lake, you know, my entire life. I went to college at IPFW, right out of college. I worked at J K Morgan Chase. And from there. Held quite a few different financial positions. So it is my privilege to take this position and I look forward to serving this community for the time. For as much time as I possibly can. As far as the voucher for December and January, we went through all the bills have been paid up to date through January and February. Everything is listed on the voucher. If there's any questions. Feel free to, to let me know.
Hearing any other questions, I would make a motion to accept the voucher as. As written.
Motion, do I have a second? George, I'll second it. Motion and a second, all of them favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same signs. Motion carries. Right. Item D, the January, February voucher registered warrant.
The voucher for January and February has been filled out. All the bills have been paid, everything is on here. Uh, the one thing that did stand out was there's an insurance payment that was made on the twenty-first of February minus seven thousand dollars. That was a little bit of a bigger bill because it's a quarterly bill that's paid. That's the one that does stand out on that voucher. We also have the payroll that is a little bit of the higher amount, but everything else seems to be from. Uh, what I'm looking at, everything seems to be pretty, pretty straightforward. This is my first month, so I'm still trying to get my head wrapped around everything, but. All the bills were paid and everything looks pretty good as far as January and February. Any questions?
I had, I had some questions on the operating time. Okay. And I was looking at revision that was posted prior to the weekend. So if you've updated this, just letting that, February sixteenth. At an entry under entitled U N F S with no description.
Yes, that was corrected. That was, I overlooked that one, we just needed to delete that entry, so that one should be deleted. And on the updated Saturday. Apparently this morning, it is all correct.
Okay. Us saying on operating time, February one first, thousand ninety-three, N S C O is missing a description.
Yeah, that is actually for the grinder pumps. So that correction has been made. It is now under the sewer operating. Part of the voucher. And that was for the grinder pumps. So that. Entry has been moved from the general fund down to the sewer fund.
That goes, February one of sixth. Twenty-three oh one eighty-eight visa has balance due in the comments.
And yeah. That one is. The Visa bill and we have a. Path new balance of about fifteen hundred dollars and I'm trying to figure out what departments exactly. Should be charged for the different things that have been charged to that visa. There are a few things that are going to be needed to charge to the sewer. So I'm going to go through that bill and divide and figure out exactly what charges should be. Assigned to which department. So that's one of the questions we're.
And then February twenty-seven, Amazon entries are applying.
That one.
Was that a similar situation where you're trying to figure out? Which one did we get in February twenty-seven? Okay. So that's been updated.
That was.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one's been updated to reflect supplies. It was for lights for the sewer trucker. Yeah.
Yeah, that was on a order.
Okay. Thanks. And then sewer fund, I had a February twenty-third N S C O entry being like, is that also the?
That was a correction, yeah, I moved that one thousand.
Okay.
In the twenty-third. That entry should just be deleted.
It still needs to be deleted or is it deleted on the new? Okay, I didn't want you. So the only thing that hasn't been resolved is on the operating fund and that's related to the visa. Correct charges.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any other questions for Nathan? Not an entertainer motion to approve this. As.
Brent, I'll make a approval to. Prove with corrections.
Molly, I'll second that.
That motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. Motion carries. All right. Moving on to.
With your. Yeah. Go.
Yeah, we'll go down now for the audience to item. A golf cart.
So we discussed the golf cart towards the end of last year. As many of you know, there were several concerns that were discussed, addressed, and. One of the reactions is to take a look at our golf cart ordinance. And when we reviewed the first go around, Darren brought up a very valid concern. And that the registration fee should not need to be increased if we do not see that same need for an increase in the amount of. What it costs us to actually have the office send out the notifications, the emails. That our deputies go on site to inspect the golf carts, things along those lines. So Chris, after request counsel did a very good job of breaking everything down and Darren, your concern was valid. There is no need to raise the registration fees. So I suggest moving forward. Uh, you already got her up. If you can go to page two, please. Item number five. Where we had discussed changing the registration fee from forty dollars and several other options. It's my suggestion that we leave this alone after the research that Chris completed. However, I do feel that we should still look at item B on that list, and that is the temporary registration. There was discussion to possibly eliminate this. However, I think it is in the best interest of the town to be in there. Um, I would like to see that change to seven days. And possibly adjust the fee, it is a couple more days, but adjust the fee from ten to fifteen. Continuing online. Then come back to this, if we want to discuss it in detail. Continuing down. Uh, the last. Second to last page. Have a big second. The. Nothing for just. No, yeah, go just a little. There we go. I think that's the top of H. Essentially. Where the, I can read a lot if it's easier. Currently, we have it set for. A violation of the provisions of this ordinance shall be considered a class B infraction and so result in fines and penalties as follows. First offense, a fifty dollar fine. Second offense, a seventy-five dollar fine. Each additional offense, offense, one hundred dollar fine. Additionally, if three or more violations of this ordinance occur within one calendar year, the registration of the golf cart, whether annually or daily, shall be suspended. And the owner or operator of the golf cart shall not be eligible. Or operator of the golf cart shall not be eligible for another registration for one calendar year from the date of suspension. I still think it is in the best interest of the town to adjust these fines. And propose that we move forward with a violation of the provisions of this order shall be considered a class C infraction. And shall result in fines and penalties as follows. First offense, one hundred dollars. Second offense, two hundred dollars. Each additional offense, three hundred dollars. Additionally, if three or more violations of this ordinance occur within one calendar year, the registration of the golf cart, whether annually or daily, shall be suspended and the owner or operator of the golf cart shall not be eligible. For another registration for one calendar year from the date of suspension. I still feel that that is in the best interest of the town to adjust that. So I've got my feeling. I'd like to open it up to council. If you guys. Have any questions or would like to discuss any of the findings, um, provided the analysis that Chris. Had made as to why I don't think we should adjust the registration fees. However, from previous conversations. That we have discussed the need to increase the fines. Again, open it up for conversation amongst the.
It's Molly and I think we've talked about this for a very long time. So I am in agreement with the recommendations you're making. As I think you captured everything from our previous conversations.
I concur. Did you have a lot of repeat offenders, Chris?
Not that citation were issued before. We only had, um, actually didn't have any repeat offenders out there. Every time somebody got a. Uh, or more warning from us, we didn't observe another violation from that person again. Um, we did issue, I think, one golf cart citation last year that was. Uh, actually had uniform traffic ticket where they did have to pay the fine.
Uh, just to refresh my memory, Chris, uh, the golf cart can have any number of drivers.
They have to have a valid operator's license either through Indiana or a number state. Um, so typically depending on the state. Um, could be anywhere from the age of fifteen to sixteen years of age to operate a golf cart. They, under that age would not allow operators.
So does the citation against the individual?
That citation was issued actually to the parent of the individual because it was the minor under the age of sixteen. Um, so that. Citation issued.
Yeah, so just carrying forward with the example, you know, the hypothetical scenario, um, if the golf cart A. Driver P, you know, gets a citation, golf cart A now has driver C. Do B and C get the citations? The golf cart itself is still. Out of an operational for.
Yes, it would depend on who operates the golf cart. That's the violation.
Okay.
All right, then who's, who's actually committing the violation? So. Then it's easily trackable back to the golf cart owner as long as they have their registration sticker on the golf cart. Um, we could track that a particular golf cart registered to this particular individual hasn't been in violation. However, a number of times, but it's been a different operator. So we could still go back on that registration and system of registration or not have that golf cart registered again for a calendar year.
Thank you.
The other questions?
I will, I will complete a new draft. Get it over to you and. So we can get it for their review. Run it through legal before they can further steps.
And so we should expect it next month or.
Though. Well, there's, there's a process that we have to follow is changing. Changing the things. But yes, it will move forward.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Brett. All right, moving on, we are at item B, Marshall's previous vehicle.
So. I have had this on agenda since this has been carried forward since September of twenty one. Um, the discussion on the Tahoe and keeping it or not keeping it. I think there's, um, as we look at the Tahoe, um, our marshals have a new vehicle. And so that. The Tahoe is there and I know currently some of the employees are using it. I think we need to look at the insurance, the liability, where we're storing the vehicle. And so that's what I, I just wanted to open it up for some discussion first since. This has been carried on for so, carried over for so long.
Um, so I'd like to hear from the uh, employees that are using the vehicle if they're in the room. And the benefits that they.
Um. So, uh, for those of you don't know who I am, I'm the zoning minister for the town show. My name's Robert. Um. I, I'm in favor if we, if you guys are considering keeping it, looking into the respective areas to make sure we can do so. Um, mainly because I think it's great visibility for the public. So when I see, see someone. Coming up in a black F one fifty with the dive flag on the front of it and they don't know who the heck it is. Um, that can be a little, that can be, um, a lot daunting to some folks, um, you know, when you're just walking up to somebody's store compared to. The Tahoe that has clearly on the side of the vehicle. Um, so they understand that it's a town official that's coming to talk to them. So they kind of already are in, you've already bridged part of a gap in conversation. Uh, showing that of the public that you're a town official. Um, the other thing is, is, um, I like my truck. Uh, I drive a lot of miles on it every day. I know driving on the lake isn't adding a ton of miles, but it is still wear and tear on my vehicle. So anytime that I can keep any amount of wear and tear up on my vehicle. I, I would appreciate that. Um, but mainly, um, there are. Events, um, as far as like training seminars, stuff like that. Um, I really wanted to go to Terre Haute this year. Um, there's a planning seminar down there, uh, which is a four hour drive and. For stuff like that, I don't want to put four hours of time on my vehicle if that's an option to me. Obviously I went on, I know I can get reimbursed. Um, but it, it definitely, uh, since it's something that's there, it definitely helps. Um, I do know, um. They use the Tahoe earlier to, to go to another training over in Chisholm. And since the marshals have used it, we've put about a hundred sixty four miles on it. So not a whole lot right now, but granted it is winter. So why I'm going on that one. Nearly put the amount of frequency that I will be during the summer, spring and fall months. So. Um, and it's just, I don't. And if somebody said, well, why can't you put a magnet on it? Uh, I don't put anything in my truck. I don't want to stretch my pant very particular about stuff like that. So if, if you guys do move to, um, get rid of it, I'm, I'm not going to be putting a magnet on my vehicle. So. Um, that's, that's what I, my, my case is and uh, there's a part that needs to look over and uh, keep track of all the information. Uh, something certainly can if that's what the uh, decision is. Either way you go, it doesn't really make a difference, but it definitely helps me out. A lot, especially, um, for visibility sakes. Um, plus I guess the upside, but uh. But if it doesn't, it looked like a police car still going around the lake. So if someone sees it coming towards them, you usually slow it down, right? Saying. That's all I have.
Uh, one hundred and sixty four miles. What, what period of time was that?
From October to uh, last week. So a majority of that was traveled to Chisholm. I think that's about forty miles there. Back, so. Well, I'm out of Georgia.
You saw. Are, are there other employees that are?
Um, outside of that, other than that particular instance, not right now. That's what I'm aware of, but the key sitting in my uh, office, somebody was asking. Behind the lap joint. There is a spare key if it's needed. Guy has it. But I do know when they did that, I, Jen, uh, was at Denver and uh, guy were all able to ride in that instead of getting in the sewer trucks shoulder to shoulder. So.
And Chris, I, I know somewhere. Um, along the lines you had expressed. The benefits maybe in an email or having a backup.
Yeah, so we, yeah, the marshals have not, to my knowledge, we haven't driven the Tahoe since we got the Durango. However, I would like to keep it as a backup vehicle. Um. When we got the Durango and we stripped the gear out of the Tahoe, we actually left the siren and the red and blue lights in the vehicle. Um, because at that point in time, we weren't sure if we were going to be able to keep the vehicle, not keep the vehicle. Um. So I opted to keep all that. Emergency equipment inside the vehicle, um, mainly use as a possibility for a backup vehicle that needed by the marshal office. So. Um, currently we have six employees, Scott Marshals, uh, myself and five deputies. Um. We've only ever had one vehicle up here. So that is an argument to be made, but we've only ever had one vehicle. We've never needed a second one. However, we've never had this many employees on the police department for. Because there's so many employees, that does increase the risk of a vehicle getting involved in a crash in just a car deer crash. Um, I know myself. I wife of them all in a car deer crash, um, last year and her vehicle was out of operation for three months before it could get fixed. I know I had a conversation with yours. You mentioned the same thing about uh, a vehicle taking a while to get fixed. So if we do have a vehicle or the Durango is in the crash, whether it's a car deer or. Um, it'd be a crash with another vehicle and it's either unsafe to operate or undrivable. We currently would have no vehicle to drive as a police vehicle. Um. You know, we can't drive our own personal vehicles. They're not equipped with emergency equipment. Um, they're not designed to transport prisoners or anything like that. Um, we can't, even though all of us work for the sheriff's ball, because of the full time job and can't use the county vehicles. Up here in Clear Lake, they are owned by the county and the commissioners, not the county clerk. So we wouldn't be able to utilize those vehicles. Um, so we wouldn't have anything to be able to drive around. Um, the main deterrent of any crime is actually just visibility of law enforcement. So. We wouldn't have any vehicle riding around that says clearly the police department on it. Um, summertime, yes, we'd be able to use the marine patrol boat for operations. Um, again, that only puts us on the water. That doesn't do us any good on the roads as far as speeders. Taking care of golf cart violations and things of that nature, uh, making sure people and pedestrians are safe during that timeframe where there wouldn't be anything available at all for the police just on the water. Um, if we are on the water and we make an arrest or have an issue on the water, we have no way to transport anybody. From the boat to either somewhere in the county, to the hospital or to the jail for making arrests. Um, there are a few times when having two vehicles would be nice, uh, mainly the fourth of July. Um, typically the town police vehicle is at the area where the fireworks are set off. Um, we usually try to have the marine patrol boat in the water. If we had a backup vehicle, then we would be able to, um, use that backup vehicle. As a patrol vehicle and still drive around the lake while the other vehicle is making sure that the area where the fireworks are being set off stays safe. For not only the town residents, but also the uh, employees that are setting those fireworks off. So. Having that backup vehicle, like you're granted, um, wouldn't primarily be used by us probably at all more for the planning commission or anybody else in the town. Um, but just having that and having that option available. So if we do need it, we do get into the vehicle or whatever, something like that. Um, we're not trying to figure out what to do for a patrol vehicle, um, especially if it's out of commission for any, any amount of time. It took us nine months to find that vehicle. Granted, the vehicle situation, I think it's a little bit better now than what it was last year. Um, but we don't know how that's going to fluctuate. Um, we could be, you know, if we got in a crash tomorrow and that vehicle gets totaled. Or it's on a commission for three or four months, we're not going to have a vehicle or if we need to buy a new one, it may be this fall before we can buy the vehicle to be able to replace that one. So I'd like to keep it as a backup just for that reason and then also to be a time for us to use.
Thank you. Very comprehensive as always. Appreciate it. I don't have any more questions.
Well, I, I'm gonna add a couple of comments because when you take a hundred and sixty four miles and divide it by four and a half months, that's forty one miles a month. So when you take that, that's a mile a day, a little bit of. Um, and I think, um, we need to be fiduciary responsible. I understand where everybody's coming from. But there's a need to have and a nice to have. And we upped the budget to get the Durango when I went back and looked at the minutes. And the Durango was over. Close to sixty thousand dollars. It was over fifty six. I don't know by the time, um, I think graphics and gear and everything was added. And the federal government has increased the reimbursement, um, on per mileage to sixty five and a half cents a mile. And Robert, I know you, and I appreciate that you don't want to put magnets on your car and that's obviously your choice, your car. But from a visibility perspective, you can get a magnetic signage from AC graphics in Fremont for a hundred and twenty five dollars for two signs. I think we all have seen more and more companies going to that approach. And so I think those are some of the things that we need to consider as a part of this. Um. We have not had a backup for the police. Um, we're not typically a clear like transporting prisoners. Um, having a backup doesn't mean we would have no police coverage. Um, we would have coverage. It just would not be in those vehicles.
I wouldn't respond, just asking. So I, I could sit here and then I could sit here.
Other people, if we had an emergency at Clear Lake, we would have somebody.
New joy, right? They would come to. So.
It wouldn't be patrolling.
Right, yeah, we would not have a patrol. Um, our officers could still work. They would be sitting here in the off, like sitting here in the office or on the marine patrol. Though if, uh, during the summer months, but if there's a, let's say we have no patrol vehicle, there just is a domestic here in town, we wouldn't be able to respond to that. Another agency would have to come in, go to that incident, investigate it. And then they would be the primary department as far as making an arrest or doing whatever with it. Whereas we're still sitting here in the office.
But that is, if something happens to the current vehicle. And when we look at the marshal reports, when you go back and you look month after month after month. Um, we don't typically have a lot here. We appreciate, I mean, I, I, I think everybody here appreciates you and your team. I'm just, is this really the right way for us to spend our money?
I'd like to. Yeah, China. I'd like in China because I've been thinking about this part two and I'd like thoughts and comments, especially from Chris. We had discussed a motorized bicycle at one point in time. And that to me is a solution. As another form of transportation that we could have officers utilizing. Whether it's one person on the bike and one person on the water, one person. In the top, or excuse me, not top, one person in Durango, one person on the bike. We can have two going around the roads. So when I'm thinking about the Tahoe and I'm seeing things, knowing that we haven't had one in the past and we've talked about increasing it to two different avenues. It seems like the more economical way for the town would possibly be to have that motorized bike. As a secondary form. Now I know there's limitations to it, but that also offers us the ability to have additional. People around the lake without the investment of a secondary. Vehicle for the police force or a backup vehicle for the police force. And in fact, my mind kind of keeps turning. We've also talked about new equipment, new trucks that were not included in the budget. So when we spec out that next vehicle, maybe that's something that we need to look at is. Hey, we need a vehicle that can comfortably fit. Three to four individuals so they could go to Chisholm in that vehicle. And be comfortable and not have the. How's, how's that truck then? This guy's not been here. He can't describe it to us, but.
He's on Zoom, actually.
Hey. We, we have heard several, several times that it is not the most ideal form of transportation, especially for any kind of long distance moves. So if we would decide to. Sell a town, then maybe those funds should be looked at to go towards the motorized vehicle and getting. The sewer department, street departments, a better vehicle that could. Fill multiple.
And I think too, if there's a conference you want to go to, I think there's options, like if you don't want to use your personal vehicle, there's. And I think too, if there's a conference you want to go to, I think there's options, like if you don't want to use your personal vehicle, there's no reason you couldn't come to us or get a rental vehicle for that time period. I think that's always an option too, so you, if that's.
I never actually thought about that, so.
So I guess I would like to put a motion on the table to sell.
So if we are driving our vehicle to, like, SoCal Post Office, if I get an accident, am I covered in the one company time?
Can I cover her? It's involving an uninsured owner?
Is there insurance agent? I think we would have to look and, we would have to look and see what kind of coverage.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know. Well, then maybe we need to reevaluate the insurance coverage that we, from a policy. No, I think that's.
Question.
That's fine, and if something, if we haven't been and you haven't been covered, then we should check that. So maybe, and you can, because regardless of what we do, if you're doing that, it should be covered if you're doing town visits. Thank you.
I was just gonna ask, is somebody working the cost side? Do we have cost numbers, what are, what the vehicles costing us?
That was something that was.
Is that work in progress?
Well, it's been at progress since you came anywhere last year.
How often the oil change in the vehicle is dependent on, you know, driving out of the vehicle. That particular vehicle is in an oil change every five thousand miles, which doesn't happen very often. I mean, a couple of times a year is when they all change it. We've been paying to build it, wrecking it, doing because they work and service a fleet vehicle. I want to say typically the oil change, I don't know, maybe fifty or sixty dollars for that oil change. But they also go through and they check it, because it was a police vehicle, more than what they would have been a passenger car. I think we only took it, got an oil change maybe a couple of times last year. But again, that's going to be dependent on the driving of it. Obviously, the fuel is another consideration, which, depending on how much you can strip and what the fuel costs are. And I think the insurance, and Jessica, correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was around twenty-five hundred dollars to be here for insurance on the vehicle.
Yes.
Twenty-five hundred?
Yes. But it doesn't matter if it's a police vehicle, a town vehicle, or whatever kind of vehicle it is, it's whatever shoes worth twenty-five hundred dollars insurance on it.
Well, I guess I, I'm like, Dan, I would, I would like to see the numbers. Obviously, the insurance got away everything. Based on the number of miles, we're going to get about ten years before the first oil change. So. Questions? Yeah. We have a new fire line? So I mean, the, and fuel will be right there with it. I have my concerns too, just because I've been in the process of trying to buy trucks right now, and my trucks are out two to three years. So if you, if you wanted to jump back in the game, you're not going to be doing it. And so I think that we can look at, I know at all of this, but I think we need one last brush of the cost of ownership versus, you know, how much we're going to get out of it based on, you know, the value of it right now.
And I, 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 I think that there's consideration that we, that we need to have with regards to the insurance coverage and the risk it's putting our employees if they use their own vehicle. That was an action that we did to look into that. The cost associated with buying and firming that eliminates that risk. In other words, they're covered. And then the cost associated with keeping the vehicle. That's kind of where, that's what's formulating in my mind as far as the cost compares.
So who's doing the financials?
Why don't we work with the insurance? And then for comparison, I mean, if we've got, I mean, you got a hundred and sixty-three miles in four months, they can, and I can tell right now, it's going to be cheaper for the town to pay the mileage for the employees that are driving it versus maintaining, maintaining twenty-five hundred dollars in insurance, the fuel, the storage, the cleaning, ev- everything. It's, it's going to be outweighed. So the, the real question is how many miles a year, hang on. Sorry. The real question is how many miles a year would it be used? Because that's the basis. And is that hundred and sixty-three miles that have been used in the last four and a half months real or not real? To get you guys the comparison that you're looking for, we have to have a better understanding of how many miles that actually can put on that secondary vehicle to do a true cost analysis. A shoot from the hip, right now, a hundred and sixty-three miles versus sixty-five cents, sixty-five and a half cents.
And I would be willing to bet that the more majority of that hundred and sixty-four dollar miles was probably in the past month. I, I'm thinking the vehicle probably sat there for a while.
It did. Yeah, I, I didn't start using it until like last month, as far as like the miles that I put on, I'd gone around the lake and stuff. So outside of that, then the one before would have been to Shipshawana.
The other thing we need.
But I could only use that as, that was the last number he had. And the mileage that I got off of it, that's how I had to give it to you.
No, that's, no, it's great.
First of all, I'll just apologize, because I apparently didn't communicate my point very clearly. The cost of increasing our insurance, town insurance to cover four employees who are driving their own vehicles may now, I'm just, I don't know, but it may outweigh the cost associated with keeping the vehicle and requiring our employees to drive it. That's the comparison that we don't have that information.
Right.
Okay.
That's fine. I'm just saying, when I went back, this has been going on for September of twenty twenty-one, the vehicle's been sitting there. We all know that that cost us money. And again, we, as a council, are responsible for the finances, along with the clerk treasurer. And as that sits there, when mileage rates go up, there's nice to have and there's need to have. Chris and the marshals needed to have a new vehicle. Guy is probably going to need a new truck. And so those are things that I see as more of a need, so I wanted to bring that forward as an outstanding unfinished item, and we can carry it forward to next month and keep it under unfinished business and come back with specific numbers on all of that. It's a year and a half is a while.
I'm good if we want to bring this tomorrow, we're already reconvening.
Like, it's not, you're going to get your insurance information.
You know, the other, the other thing that, that's in play here is, right now, we're at the high watermark of the used car market. And as this thing ages out, it's going to continue to lose value there, so we could have more cash in the pot to work with. Second of all, I didn't hear about the storage of the vehicle. We're going to store this thing, you know, where I was pushing about keeping vehicles inside. And do we have a facility for that? Or we're going to have to build a new building or something? And, and lastly, all of our state employees run their own personal vehicles. We had auditors here, I don't know, Montecristo, and I asked them, I said, boy, those are nice of the state cars you're driving. He said, no, they're my own. He says, you have a state car system now, and this is, auditors that travel the state of Indiana, and they're all reimbursed, not the federal rate, but a state rate less than the federal rate. And they were happy campus with it. So the state is going to now, because we need to do ours, and then see where the least cost is.
Good discussion, everybody, and thank you, Robert and Chris.
Are we done with that? All right. All right, the last item under item ACGIS system, mine has that one. Due to personnel changes, our G I S system person has dealt with three of them, and we don't have it set up yet.
But that can be set up, I mean, because again.
It's about a fifteen minute phone call.
Okay.
But I, Nathan.
So Nathan just to do this?
Things on its agenda.
Okay.
Worried about a G I S system that we've never had before.
That's all right. I just, again, when I went back, this was brought to us from a resident initially, back in September of last year. In December, it was on, I think Darren, you sent a thing prior to our December meeting, that this was going to get taken, you know, so. No, I understand that, but we had, we also have December to.
All right, moving on, item nine A, I think you want to move forward, correct?
Oh, I moved that to the bottom as well, so we could get to some of the more pertinent, because if that's tomorrow, that can be. We're on D.
You did.
Two sixty M G C.
Who advertised a C C M G project.
Sorry. Okay. So the project plan, I haven't been updated, posted on the website, I think it was Friday, February seventeenth. We held two public information sessions, both in person on Zoom. And I accepted email questions to my town emails. DLZ is, I also, as part of those public sessions, reviewed the list of actions that we still have outstanding against the current plans, and we intend to answer the mail on those. The updated designs will be used for bidding purposes to meet the April sixth C C M G deadline. It is important to advertise the project this week and later than next week. And I would like to open up our council discussion at this point.
Well, I guess the opening question is, are we going to advertise this bid as presented or with the discussion notes to modify?
It would be my desire to answer the action items and update. Okay, getting ahead on.
Yeah.
Good. Any other discussion?
No, I just want to say, for those of us in the room that have sat through five hours of listening, and Todd presenting, and Mike, and Dan, and Darren, I think, great job, everybody.
Thank you. After DLZ, thank you. So I would like to move to open for public comment and question, if there is any.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
It's during, go ahead.
Go ahead, go thank me. I have a second, although in favor of saying aye. Open to public comment.
Hearing hearing none and seeing none on Zoom, I would move to close public comment.
It's Molly on second.
Motion and a second, although in favor of signified by saying aye. Both same sign, motion carries.
I would move to authorize DLZ to update the C C M G designs based on the actions as necessary. You can prepare the advertisement for a project that is to be used by the town clearly clerk treasurer to advertise no later than Thursday, February. Sorry, that's actually March second, and it's a short month. Thursday, March second.
Tuesday, twenty eighth.
And Tuesday, the twenty eighth.
March.
March, scratch, March second. You have the Tuesday, the twenty eighth. Yeah. Seventeen, yeah.
Just for clarification, advertise by February.
Yeah.
All right, I have a motion, do I have a, do I have a motion?
Molly on second, sir.
A motion and a second, all vote in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carried. All right, item E, fee schedule update.
I'll introduce this. The current fee schedule for services associated with file fees, plan commission, and B Z A activities was adopted six years ago and no longer reflects the services and costs associated with tasks being performed. Our zoning administrator has completed an update and would like to review the town council and answer any questions in preparation for a vote in March. Move to the poll, the floor representative recommended the schedule.
I have a motion, I have a second. Go ahead, go thank him. A motion and a second, all vote in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Both same sign. What are yours, Robert?
First office members. Okay, so why the increase in fee? The thing I look at majority, when, when, when we dictate what fees should be, or when councils should dictate what fees would be, and people are coming in and requesting work to be done, whether it's a variance, an I L P, a P C request, whatever it is, it shouldn't be their neighbor's responsibility to cover the cost to get that, that meeting or request done. And like Ian said, the current fee schedule was adopted December twelfth, twenty sixteen. So due to the increasing cost, we definitely need to review the schedule. First on the list is the I L P, since it is our current fee schedule by I L Ps, you'll see that they go in pretty similar increments from a hundred, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred to six hundred or four thousand square feet greater products. So we're, those involve on this, flatwork, retaining lots of, everything I'm doing when I go over I L P, I have to go back to this and look at it for the fee. And then, of course, post-construction improvements or triple the fee of whatever. Next slide is, these are the proposed changes in red. You'll see in some cases they're considerable. One thing to keep note here is the larger the project gets, the more in-depth the project becomes. So the more time it takes to look at, the more things that we need to make sure that are being the more things that I'm making sure on the checklist that are, are, are correct. Town of Clear Lake has a very detailed U D O, so Town of Clear Lake is demanding a lot. In retrospect, if your product, if your house is becoming a multimillionaire home, we're looking at a lot to make sure it's done right the first time and not are not issuing permits and error. No changes sign, other I L P fees, amendments to the site plan, that, that, that's basically, you know, if somebody comes in with an amendment and it's significant enough, that takes an infinite amount of time, we want to make sure that we're covering the cost of that inspection fees. So one of the things was asked of me is with me being here full time for you guys, and what the demand is to the U D O, we want to ensure that people are doing what they're supposed to. So start implementing post-inspections, pre-inspections to make sure the setbacks are being maintained, and then re-inspections. So like, if you fail an inspection and I have to go back out there, any building department's going to require the same kind of fees. So if you, if you built your building too close to the property line, or you put the form too close, and I have to come back out another day. If you, if you built your building too close to the property line, or you put the form too close, and I have to come back out another day after you fix it. That, that's basically a fine there, so, and then demolition permit, um, the initial cost is the same. Each additional strike for twenty-five, and then the post-inspection fee on that, we wanna make sure when we come back that you've taken care of all the trash and junk, because. The town of Clear Lake does have an ordinance, making sure that you're supposed to clean that stuff up. So we wanna make sure we're being neighborly, so that's the I L P, B schedule, again, it is numbers, they're always up for debate. But that, that's what's. Recommended at this time. B Z A, this is where I kinda get into the, the, like. The cost on your, your neighbors, anyone that's requesting a variance, they're, they're asking to go against the ordinance. And it should not be anyone's responsibility to pay for the cost of that meeting. So obviously, things have gotten more expensive, mailing notices. We have a seven, or, no, I'm sorry, we have a five member B Z A, the cost to pay those members. So that's what. So at the top is the current, sorry, the bottom is the proposed, one of the things you'll see, I'm trying to remember where it changed. Okay. So. I think I just kinda fixed it up to make sure that use variances and development variances were kinda separated out a little bit clearer. There are different types of variances, use variances are really hard to beat, there's a couple more standards that have to be met than a development variant, so. And use variances are pretty hard to get anyways, so. But at the end of the day, the cost went up because of mailing noticing, because we gotta go through the paper, the. You know, the radio, everything that we gotta do, oh, I have a list, I forgot about that, and town official review and legal counsel. Public seeking, so it's coming to light. So P C P's, above is the current, and below is the proposed. These ones aren't quite as much. The administrative subdivisions, what is reviews that we gotta go in on those, we gotta have. How, council help make sure that things are done correctly. Nothing was actually added to any of these sections, most of them are just fee increases. So U D O requirements and affected sections, no U D O was actually affected by it, one that twenty-four A. Gives the town council the authority to adopt, reject, or even amend the fee schedule, it has to be done by ordinance. The U D O does not have any sections, I already said that, so. The only thing that actually will be affected is the last ordinance, such as by sixteen dash twelve, and then these are sources, so I look. At Carmel, Carmel, Camp, I said that wrong, Indianapolis, Jasper, Fremont, and Angola. Now, a lot of you are going, well, why are we looking at Carmel and Indianapolis, or Jasper, you might not know where Jasper's at, but. I, one, to find the community yard size, because first I look at size, it's almost incredibly hard to find the community, it has a U D O or a zoning ordinance that enforces what we enforce. So Fremont, Angola are our closest neighbors that have this kind of stuff that you think would, would actually reflect what we do, well, they don't exactly do that either, they're not demanding as much. So we're kind of more in line with, not, I'm not saying we're at the top with the Carmel, Indianapolis, or Jasper, but. Kinda more in line with them, what we're requiring, so I looked at all those. B schedules to kinda. Go with a basis to see, you know, what, what is, what's way out there, what's, what's not enough, and, you know, Fremont, Angola, we're on the realms of. Where our current B schedule is more than theirs right now. So in Indianapolis and Jasper, we're more in line with them, and then Carmel was more at the top end, so. And that's where we're at, I think, yep. So. That's all I had, if you guys have any questions for me?
Did you, this is Brian, did you talk to any of the builders and get input from them that we've used around the area?
No, but I'm gonna tell you what they're gonna say. Anytime there's a fee increase, builder is gonna be kind of against it. I know initially when I came here. Like Busher Homes, I know Mrs. Screw, who does a lot of their permitting from them, they're like, town clearly has. You know, they have heavier fire fees, but they're asking a lot more, so. And I've worked with her in other communities too, so. It's. I, I can definitely go out there and ask and see what their input is, I, I know quite a few builders and I, I know what they're gonna be though. I mean, they never wanna, they never wanna feed an increase in fees, because that means they have to go back to their residence. But one of the things, like I said at the beginning, and I consider when you're building a multimillion dollar home, which often, I don't hear anything about that. A thousand dollar permit, and it's not the, the most of their worry. So that's where they're trying to, you know, skimp on the money a little bit, not that, I'm saying they're skimping on anything, but, you know, that, that's the least of their worries, so that they can. Try to save money for their client, that's where they're gonna do it, but. In relation to the projects that are normally being done, it's, it's a small percentage of the, the cost of the project.
Last question would be, is there some sort of clause or something within the B structure? Should it be the fault of Clear Lake not fulfilling their requirements, that the residents would not have to pay the fee schedules depending on that?
Say that again.
Should a resident have to request a variance through no fault of their own? Because of something we as the town did, do we have a way to be able to waive the fees?
Yeah, town council can waive any fees, you guys are ultimately who set the, the fee schedule, now, when you bring up variance, though. I'm, I'm questioning whether you're saying if something happens and, and the town, let's say I mistakenly approved an I L P, and they needed a variance, but.
That is exactly what I guess.
So. Me and actually Mike had a really good talk about he was dealing with another thing, there's a lot of cases out there, if something like with that to happen, that would be somewhere where we would fight the ball, because. I would make it, no, first off, I'm not gonna make it unknown, but I'm not gonna say in my career, eight years ago, in this, I've never issued a permit without error, I have. The question that comes down to is. Are they vested? And it's, it's a common term used in planning, invested basically means, do they have concrete or footings in the ground, if they do. You're pretty much out of the water there, you pretty much gave them the authority to do what they needed to do. They, it's now non, it's now lawful amendment for me.
So you would not essentially make somebody take a portion of their house off, put it back on? Is what you're saying?
So, yeah, if I approve something in error. That technically required a variance, and they, and I didn't catch it, nobody caught it. And I went back, you know, darn, I, they needed two foot variance or two foot variance. And they got the footing board, it, it's, they're technically vested, any court's gonna say, you should, you should have caught it when you, when you had the chance, you, it's too late. That's litigation that the township doesn't wanna get involved in, you're better just following on the sword and labeling it as a lawful amendment for me.
Thanks.
Other questions, Robert?
No, we're fine.
Good job.
Thank you, I would like to move to open for public comment and question.
I'd merge it into every second.
I'll say that.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Helping for public. No, I don't see me there, during.
Yes.
We do have a race, and Jim? There you are.
Yes. Yeah, as a homeowner on Clear Lake and a contractor, and I serve on the Allen County Building Board of Commissioners. Those fees are really high, and I, I don't have a problem with it, but I just, when you compare it to Allen County to build a house. Those are really, really high fees, guys.
Just, just for clarification, Jim, you're saying the proposed fees that we're looking at are really high in comparison?
They're probably triple, maybe four times what it would be in Allen County. And I'm not a builder, but I'm just telling you, the Bob Bushers, the Delagrain, they're gonna look at that and say, wow, compared to any other county nearby around us, those fees are three to four times the rates.
Thank you. No one.
All right, hearing none, I'm going to close public comment.
Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Okay, appreciate the presentation, appreciate the comments. The, the next step, where this is heading is, this was, can I go, so, consider the introduction? To get feedback on it. We'll take that feedback, Robert will, and. Make any adjustments that, that he feels are warranted and to bring it to council in March. And the corresponding ordinance for approval. That's what we're having.
Thank you. Moving on, I have D L Z work order.
Okay, D L Z provides the town road engineering services, you know, most recent example is the ongoing C C M G projects. And it's based on a time and material basis, D L Z rates agreement expired in December thirty first, I think that these rates have been. Consistent for six years, roughly. D L Z has prepared an updated agreement for council consideration. And I would now open it up for council discussion.
This rate schedule that we're looking at would apply going forward to the road project. That we will ask D L Z to assist in the management of.
So given that we have D L Z in the room.
Yeah.
I think I'm going to open the floor to D L Z.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll say.
Motion and a second, all of the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign.
So your question is, the, the project that we're. Going to move forward on in twenty twenty-three. Are you on like an on-call basis when there is an issue, or is there a standing inspection sequence to which we'll contract you guys for going forward for our road project?
Well, I think that that was actually one of the things that we have been talking about with Dan, was maybe that there needs to be a little more. On-site presence during this road project, and then regarding some of the more. Sensitive areas of the road, so in answer to your question, yes, would be based on that rate schedule, and it would be as needed or as corrected. There will be a certain amount regardless of. The operation, that somebody would have to be out there, look at it at different times, in order to cover your best interest and make sure the project is being done correctly.
But you know, specific checkpoints that. You will be there for this aspect or that aspect, it's on an as-needed basis, or.
Do you know, I would say anytime there would be approval being performed or anything of that nature, we would want an inspector on-site to make sure that that is. Form adequately, that's not something I wanna take to find records.
Word for.
Sure.
What, um, yeah, and when that occurs, it'll be at these rates, whichever pay grade correct is needed for that, for that particular effort, correct? And, and who, I guess this is a question for the council, who will be contracting with D L Z to initiate those inspections?
See. Guy or anybody on the. Guy. Anybody that's gonna be involved in. Yeah, Guy, Guyhead is the frontline of that, okay? These are his highly managed with D L Z. That's not to say that. Darren or I won't be involved, I'm just saying that the frontline and the point of contact is Guy. I had one question, I think it, the effectiveness date on, on the letter was January. Or is it your intention to, it would be at the back, or no, it would be as the date of approval?
Okay, yeah.
And it still ends December thirty first.
Right. We, we try and, and then we give, usually give the municipality the option of whether or not they wanna continue as, as you guessed, it's two months, it's seventeen. Any others? This. Right, hearing, hearing that, I would move to quickly open for public comment and question if there is any. Second that.
Is the rate already negotiated? Because it doesn't say any rate on the Robert letter, correct? But that.
Yeah, there.
Page him. It's the next one, go down.
The next one.
Down, there you go, okay. This is what you're paying for them, okay.
And just to be clear, the mileage is based on. Like you don't agree, that's why it didn't there. So I have, I have a second.
Wow. We need to close.
Yes, forget. Recent, I have a motion. I will make a motion to close to public comment.
Second that.
Motion and stuff.
Aye.
So the same guy. Aye. And like you could say, I have a motion. Motion, do I have a second?
George, I'll say.
Motion and a second, I'll get the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, open for public comment.
Hearing no additional.
Are you giving them a not-to-exceed for the year, or are you just opening up to an hourly? An hourly, they can bill how hard, many hours they want.
Yeah, apparently there is no N P E. Plan, but it's, it's managed really by department. Against the budgets that we have established. So that would, if, if, if for some reason we were pushing against the budgeted value. The, there would have to be an action by council for an additional appropriation possibly. And that's where we're at. And the van of, of the speed.
They only bill, they bill as they spend it, correct, so you wouldn't know how close until we've actually spent it.
Yeah.
So you wanna? Okay.
Yeah, there could be a warning track established.
Maybe.
You know, like the seventy-five percent.
Exactly. Okay. There's something to be aware.
Still have a question.
I'll second. I'll second.
Yeah, George, I thought George did.
Okay, it's George, yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Fifty yellow hundred, George, so.
I don't give a damn here. I remember now. I would move to approve the updated.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
It's Molly, I'll second that.
Motion and second. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Item. Eight.
Nine G. You have our roots.
So you also wanna go? Oh. So you're being a power point. D L Z stated in November that Clear Lake roads are only.
DLZ stated in November that public roads are only lasting about half the normal expected lifespan. And identified the root cause of premature failure in a structural based training. DLZ also stated that it would be cheaper in the long run to fix the issues with roads versus the current millinery surface approach. Based on that report, I have been performing an analysis on the cap of the town with verified major assumptions. So it's being current lifespan stability of the CCNG program and long-term cost benefits. I presented an update to that work in the December council meeting, which established the average lifespan of eight road segments recently resurfaced and verified that they were in fact degrading at a rate that was averaging about 6.7 years. The administrator of the PCMG program did not see any foreseeable reason the program would be canceled. And there is indeed a potential for long, long-term savings. Since then, I've concluded my personal work, which included taking a look at a what-if scenario, should the CCNG be canceled? And establishing with our engineering partners, a set of requirements to achieve increased road lifespan. This, this package that I'm going to brief the public tonight has been reviewed by two engineering firms. And will provide a final, and will provide a final update, which concludes with having an important time critical decision to make about the future of our roads and a recommended road committee to make to further this work and, and bring back to council a recommendation targeting July. So running through the presentation that concludes my work on this is that the asphalt roads provide a critical element to our community's lifestyle. And what that, what that includes is essentially, you know, physical well-being brought along by encouraging walking, jogging, biking, skateboarding, et cetera. Safe and smooth access for residential passenger vehicles and handicapped slash mobility equipment. Facilitates property improvements, the construction of new homes, landscaping, lawns, gardens, and enables access of critical services, emergency sanitation, town maintenance, and home delivery. And ultimately drives, it's related to our property values. So the next slide is a model that I put together that essentially compares the effects of increased lifespan of our roads. It, just for your knowledge, it's based on if CCNG were to go away and we were constrained to our current available tax levies, which as of last year was in the, was right around 260K per year that we could apply to road maintenance. With that restriction, it takes about 24 years to get around the roads. And this is using the costs that DLZ put together for our current CCNG programs, okay? So when we look at our current approach, which is millinery surface with a smaller lifespan, go ahead and start clicking. You can see that as we move year to year and we complete segments of road, stop right there, that we can afford to do with the 260K at year seven, which is about the lifespan that we have with the current approach. Go on, year eight, we start seeing the roads as we progress forward. The roads that we had done initially start to enter into a PESA rating of three or lower. And so as you continue to move forward with repaving mill and resurfaces in the roads, you can see how you're effectively chasing your own tail. It's, it's catching up the roads that need repair. We don't have the financial means to address. And by the time we get to the end of 24 years, about 80% of the roads are in poor condition. When you contrast that, if we address the root causes and make every effort to drive the lifespan up, that would be the figure over on the right, go ahead and click. This is modeling if we're able to attain a 20-year lifespan. But, and again, it's constrained to the 260K that we have available. This is what happens as we move around the lake with a millinery surface approach. The millinery surface lasting 20 years gets us this far around the lake. And then at that point, we're, we are, go ahead and start clicking. At that point, the original segments that were milled and resurfaced need, need to be addressed. Now, when I looked at, just following this model, the red on the right side totals about 1.6 miles. And through our discussions the last couple of days, someone along the line pointed out the fact that we have a number of feeder smart, small sections, cul-de-sacs and things of that nature that make up our total of 9.9 miles. I went in and added up all those little sections and I can get very close to the 1.6 miles, which means that those roads may not degrade as fast as the mainly, of the main traveled roads. And that might in itself put us in balance if we achieve the point of their lifespan. And remove the red effectively. So that was, that was a bit of an eye opener for me, but it really underscores the importance of trying to drive our lifespan of our roads up. If possible. So moving on to the next slide. If we don't, if we, the reason that I said we're in kind of a, a unique position to understand and make this decision is that if in fact the work that's been reviewed is, is accurate for the purposes of showing the effects of driving lifespan up and we don't change our ways, we could find ourselves in a situation that the current budget tax levies will require us to move away from asphalt and consider cheaper road treatments. I've gotten some recent numbers on chip and seal that would actually, that approach would, would actually be affordable. And so I just throw two on here, a couple of comparison images. Most people know and have experienced both, 700 East actually, I think a couple, maybe three years ago was, was chip and sealed and everybody basically avoided that road. Because they didn't want to trip, trip their car, et cetera. So, so it's an important, we're in an, in an important spot right now as a town. And it's critical that we move forward here and try and understand it and make a recommendation. The next slide, essentially, most have seen this through the discussions in the last couple of days. You know, I was cautioned and I, and I believe it's, it's a good caution that the 2.2 million savings identified here, you know, may actually be be neutralized by a number of other uncontrolled future money and things of that nature. But you can see, and I haven't pointed out, the behavior of each of the lines. The red line is, is the line that reflects the increase, addressing root causes and increasing putting more money into the projects, increasing the lifespan. And the orange line is the mill and resurface approach. And you can see the cycles on the orange line, which indicates the time it would take to get around the lake with the cheaper millinery surface. You have a few years, the black spots in that orange line represent the years that you're just maintaining the segment, a couple of the segments, and then you're right back into the millinery surface thing. The red line shows how you're making a significant investment. It shows that you, you, those investments go forward for a total of 16 years before we're around the lake. Then it flattens out, but it's not completely flat because in this model is the actual maintenance cost on the roads. And then you enter into another slope on that red line, which reflects the mill and resurfacing activity that we saw on the earlier slide. Then you go into a very long flat spot because you're, you're now at 20, this is using 20 years. And all you're doing is essentially tarring crack and filling cracks that may have occurred over the years, so. So it's, like I said, I had a couple of engineering firms, those been DLZ and ERI, both take a look at the assumptions and the conclusions, not that these are absolute conclusions. And that's the kind of the warning flag. But the thing, the basic idea behind driving lifespan and the advantages that that offers to the town is real. So the next, next slide. Next slide is, is how do we make that a reality? If, if indeed we're interested in going that way, how do we get there? How do we get into an actionable set of instructions for our engineering teams to go forward and drive our road lifespan up? Again, it, it really starts from a vision of what we want our roads to provide to the community. And for this, for this set of charts, I just went back to our lifestyle that we currently enjoy. The other thing I added is, is low, is the getting that lifestyle at the lowest overall cost. And what that really means is using the CCNG program that's currently afforded to communities like ours to incrementally improve the road lifespan over these next 16 years. And then get in a position whereby the maintenance costs, once you've gotten through those 16 years, those maintenance costs are less than or equal to the town's annual tax load, which is again 260K. So that's, that's how I define lowest overall cost. Next slide. So given that, you know, how do we make that become a reality? So the road requirements really play out as follows. The lifestyle, to gain the lifestyle things that I've listed on the previous chart, we need an asphalt surface. Secondly, the lowest overall cost really ties to lifespan, so drive the lifespan up. And lifespan is defined as the time between a PESA rating of 10 to a PESA rating of three, three drives action says that the road needs repaired. And to ensure maintenance costs will be less than the town's 260K in the tax levy. We're dealing with climate forces, so we have to deal with annual freeze thaw cycles, the drainage system, which I delineated in more detail on the next slide, so I'll just skip over that for now. And we'll pick it up, and structural components. The structural components come right out of designing requirements for the state. And it reflects effectively being able to handle the large construction vehicles, the triaxes, the activators, the concrete trucks. Those are all coming in, in the 60,000 pound range. And then, of course, we have to have a more deliberate maintenance program. And what's in that, what's been modeled is annual filling, filling of minor cracks and seal coating. And whatever we do for the roads, it needs to enable a mill and resurface because at some point we will have to. Next slide gets into drainage. So for, for the purposes of drainage, we are using, we felt that it compromised would be a 10-year storm event, which is essentially 1.91 inches per hour. And we must exist within the, the roadway and/or road edges. And a lot, there are numerous places around the lake where we only, the, we only authority between edge A to edge B. If there is road right, then we have the latitude, additional latitude to use that for swales and other things to manage the drainage. But it's important to keep the roadway free of standing water. It's important to ensure surface water falling under the drainage system. And it's important to prevent ponding along roadway from, which will cause seeping back into the road surface or in the under, underlying structural aspects. And the underlying road structure itself should dissipate the moisture as opposed to draw moisture in. So when you think about slays and things, will actually draw moisture in, that's a bad thing. Whereas a stone, like a limestone, will actually shed the water if it's able to. And discharge around directly to the lake will be filtered. And, and we must account for any additional loads. And probably the most gross example of that is the, the county drainage office under 700 East in the quiet harbor area, where we've got two 15-inch pipes that, you know, provide that additional load. Next slide. Really, it comes down to this, I think that the work that I've presented to the public is worthy of additional follow-up. And, and I'm recommending that we take, that take the form of a road committee, really to formulate a road policy and the associated processes. And I've listed suggested committee products below a vision and mission statement so that we can drive the, the requirement set to, to support that. Develop a road policy that's containing input from subject matter experts, superintendent to, you know, community legal, et cetera. Have a vision and mission statement which guides the year-over-year execution as we move forward to that, to that goal. And overall construction and maintenance costs, of course, sustainability assessment based on town's budget, ensure UDO stormwater management requirements apply to roads, not just residents. Governing requirements for structural drainage and maintenance of roads be firmed up. The history of the road maintenance and replacement costs be understood so that we can compare that to how our PESA ratings are, are saying the trends of our roads are degrading and lifespan. And then at the end of the day, the committee should develop a road standard and specifications to identify a minimum, a minimum set of standards that we want applied to not only our roads, but anybody that may, you know, have development ideas in the future. They would also be required to meet these minimum standards. And develop an associated processes to support the road policy. What do I mean by that? So developing the five, 10, 15-year plan, selecting the right drainage approach for each road. Selecting the right drainage approach for each road segment, how do we go about doing that? How do we identify performance measures against the plan? Because it's important. Not to just make the commitment, but actually the measure how we're doing against that commitment. And, and are we affecting the change that we want in the, in the lifespan of the roads? And so some examples would be, you know, tracking P S R. Tracking lifespan, implementation schedules, costs, et cetera, so. I believe that the road committee should be tasked with those products. And then, in, in parallel with their work, it's important that. We include this road maintenance into our next comprehensive plan whenever that happens, making sure that. That it's reflected there. And so where I'm at and what I'm going to ask council for is first. I would like to make a motion that we form a road committee. Do I have a second?
Can we have some?
Oh, certainly.
On the assigning members and the organization of the committee, I think it's a great idea, I fully support it. I would like to see, we already have you and Darren working as infrastructure. So that's already two people that are kind of looking at infrastructure. So I'd like to see the committee just be one council member and add potentially another resident. I think it's an opportunity to get more of our residents involved. And so I would like to see if you would consider that change. Cause it's not like the two of you would not be involved. You would be, but I think there's an opportunity, I think two residents when. At nine months rows.
Actually, I was thinking more of.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Too large, right, yes.
Yeah, we want to be able to get something done.
I would also like a definition of residence is property owner. Adequate as a resident, who is doing registered voter.
I was saying, oh, property owners. And I. You may remember in, in the breach alert, I did ask for anybody who was interested. In being a part of the committee, send me an email, I did receive. An email from Larry Fieney, I received Jim Bush's emails, Bob Hill, Tim Wright. And I've got a petition.
So why don't we just go with that on top of one council person, an engineering group and a paving contractor? Go with that, Chris, if they've already voiced interest, what is that for? Five, four, I think. I think you can manage that.
Now, this is all good stuff. So we have one engineering firm listed and, and then one paving contractor. Any other questions?
Yes, sir.
I've said it before and I'll say it on the base. The roads around the slate are something special, I appreciate everybody's efforts to try to maintain them and do that. We're one of the very few communities that you can actually take a walk, take a golf cart ride, take a bike ride. Take a car ride and go all the way around the lake. And that's something that we don't see a lot, so everybody's efforts and concerns and. I just greatly appreciate it because it's something that sets this area apart and it's something I think is towards the town, they serious. We need to do everything that we can to give our community. That option moving forward now, or for now and moving forward.
I mean, I've, I've been on council since, wait, seventeen, this is my first time ever seeing a proactive.
And I would just, with engineering firms and paving contractors who manage their, you know. I wouldn't want to get a bunch of big bills because they're on this committee, so utilize, utilize that. Not as, as needed, but. You might have committee meetings where. They're not there for all of it, you know, based as a group of folks, you know.
Do you have a not to?
No, I do not have a not to.
We're talking four months. Probably a couple of meetings of a week.
And so with that, we would be preparing. To have everything ready for the grant submission this summer. Would that be the expectation? I don't know that that, I know you said preparing for it, but I.
Yeah, so I picked July as the target so that we could, in fact. Influence the next round of C C. I'm sure it's a looking document. It will. But again, you know, one of the products is how to prioritize, you know, what's, what segments are next. So, I mean, that could be a simple output that would influence the next round of C C entries. If, if we, if, if the work and the, you know, the relationship. To lifespan, you know, plays out through this committee. And we could, you know, we could set up a set of requirements. That a firm like D L Z can use. I think they would actually enjoy having that to work on, so. I'd like to, I'd like to get that far, it's forty, but. That's why it's July.
Yeah, that's great, yeah, I just don't want us. In the same situation we were this round, you know, residents have a chance to hear. There's no surprise that there are others.
Okay, so I would. Make a motion, open the public, real quick, please.
I'll second that. Yes, Brian. Yeah, Brian, we're age twenty-two. So again, you had some comments in there about wanting to build offset one point nine inch rain. And, and not have water standing on the road. I mean, today, if we get a cord ranch terrain, you drive around the lake, there's a lot, a lot of bubbles. There's got to be a huge amount of water management to be able to offset that. And, and, and I, I know your modeling, you built, you probably put a lot into it, but. Do you capture that level cost in, in, in this, this, the analysis?
Well, we learned a lot in that recent set of C C M G projects. We started out with. Handling drainage through sewer, sewers and pipes. We used these requirements to refine the designs to be. More passive swales, we, we went through a trade that said. Hey, we can't afford to cut everybody's driveway and put a, put a tile in and replace their driveway. So let's take advantage where we have road or right of way to size the soil appropriately. Those numbers. And so in that, in, and so where we are today is we've actually looking at almost a three hundred K savings. So wholly to that number because we haven't gone out and said it. But you can pull D L Z to those. But, but we, we reduce the cost by going to passive. Management for the drainage and it is possible. Where we don't have road right of way, we also experience those trades. In the recent, in the, that being from the overpass between around Lake Clear Lake up to Lakeview. We don't have any road right of way, so we've employed a inverted. Road situation where the, where the drainage that goes down the center of the road to a point where we can exit it. So we've learned a lot and that's not to say we have all the answers. Each segment of road has its own restrictions, it has its own. Requirements and. But I think we're in a good position.
I don't think you'd be like driving around through a lake without water.
Yeah, I just had a quick one for B sixty-eight, what's clearly. So I, I this summer too, just, just went door to door, which a lot of the council I'm sure is aware of. Just to kind of gauge people's interest in having, you know, a, a road that's, that's in great condition, right? And, and there wasn't one person I talked to that said they didn't want that. Everyone wanted it, now someone couldn't sign my petition because of other reasons, but they were all for it. So I just think at times it's important for council to understand when. You receive feedback, a lot of times you listen to the negative and, and the people that are for it don't necessarily speak up. So I appreciate all the folks I talked to that gave me feedback and, you know, I'm glad that council. You know, everybody, right, enjoys a nice road around here and we all do, so appreciate it.
Give my claim to all places quite however. I, I, I just find it incredible, the effort the board has taken to engage the community in this conversation. And, and even more incredible, the leadership we've had, Dan Ruby. And analyzing this stuff, it's just, it's just amazing for me. What you've kind of accomplished.
Yeah, thank you. But nobody's saying. All right, hearing no additional comments, I would move to close a public comment.
Have a motion to our second. Door, you all second. Motion second, all of them, five, six, five, I was saying, aye.
Okay, so I move. So I'm going to. Establish a, a road committee as defined, as I have defined it on slide nine with the alterations which we discussed. And. A M T budget. I'll just say twenty K. And. So just, just to clarify the numbers, we're going to go from two council members to one council member. And from two residents to four residents or property owners. I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Although some favors signify by saying aye. Great, moving on, item eight. We're establishing the C C.
Yes, I'll take that one. The twenty twenty-three tax rate for the C C D fund is currently four dollars forty-eight cents. If reestablished, the tax rate for twenty twenty-four would increase to the maximum of five cents. And it generates approximately twenty K based on the twenty twenty-three assessed values of our properties. The C C D fund can be used on anything as it has no restrictions and they are in addition to the town's MAC fund property tax budget. This means reestablishing the C C, C C D fund rate. Won't affect any other funds, property tax amounts. An increase in tax rate does mean an increase in taxes to our residents. However, this impact would be very small and it's currently estimated within five dollars and fifteen dollars. For every two hundred K of assessed value. Those numbers are for Baker Tilly. D L G F requires all documents for reestablishing the C C D fund by May thirty-first. It is also important to note that the House Enrolled Act fourteen twenty-seven dash twenty twenty-one. Incorporated in Indiana Code six dash one dot one dash forty-one. The amended process for reestablishing the C C D fund such that once reestablished, the rate will remain at five percent. Of property valuations. That's different from what we've had in the past whereby you would establish the rates. And then as property values go up, the rate would change and therefore your percentage drops. And so communities were always faced with having to. Go through the action of reassessing it back to the five percent. It's no longer required with this amendment. Given the time critical nature of this task and Nathan Stryker's firm workload, learning the clerk treasurer position. He compared after our discussion. With my recommendation to hire Baker Tilly to prepare all documents for D L G F and support public meeting. Meetings to discuss the change and its impact of owners. Baker Tilly has prepared an engagement letter describing the recommended services and A N T Es of thirty-five hundred dollars. Estimate for consideration by council and recommend starting the process March first. To meet the L G S, May thirty-first deadline. With that, I'll open the discussion.
And just sort of clear on the numbers, the, is there current tax rate of point oh four three? In places, the current rate is. Or point four four eight, like four four eight.
Point oh four four eight.
Point oh, yes, yes. And that is proposed to go to point oh five. And what is, how are those funds going to be used?
They go into the C C D. And so right now. There, there is no restriction on C C Ds for any capital. Well, for the next sixteen years, we may use it.
So Baker Tilly would do, and this is for them to do an analysis only.
This is for them to prepare all the documents for supplemental to the.
To move forward with.
Yes, and they would, they would hold a public meeting, they would provide Nathan with the, you know, the notifications that he would publish in the news paper. That's, that's effectively all we ask for.
I am just going to make a couple of statements. I know it may not seem like a significant amount of money. Our schools are looking at a referendum, it was passed by the school board, so that is going to be on the ballot. We are also. When you look at our current resident mix, I know we've got six hundred and fifty houses generally speaking. But almost ninety percent of our year-round residents are widows, many on fixed incomes. So I would just ask us to be. Diligent about raising taxes. So that's. So that's my comments.
I, I would echo Molly's comments and as I watch our, our taxes here at Clear Lake, specifically at Clear Lake, uh, in addition to the town tax that we have, and as we're currently talking about adding to the town tax, uh, we are also taxed with, uh, uh, library, school, uh, we have a referendum coming at us. Uh, and I might quick note that before the referendum, the school tax went up twenty-three percent this year. Uh, their, their rates went down, but where this area gets the push up is on assessed valuations. And assessed valuations at the town of Clear Lake, year to year, twenty-two to twenty-three, were up sixteen percent. So, you know, we could say, well, we lowered our rates, but no, the bottom line tax with the assessed valuations increasing has gone up significantly. Overall, our, our totally tax bill here for the entire community, every one of us has a little different slice of the pie. But, uh, we're up for the year, year to year, total taxes are up fifteen, seven percent. So we're at, we're talking about adding a few more mils to it. I think we just need to be very careful what we're doing to our citizens.
And Clear Lake has had the largest increases, over twenty-five percent, even at the county, they're commenting about how are you guys doing it out there? Because we just keep going up and up a lot. Way more than anybody else in the county.
And the secret is just through assessed valuation, this, this year alone, uh, we led the pack in northeast Indiana, our assessed valuation were fifteen point five percent, where the Fremont Community School, which includes clearly, clearly township, town of Fremont and Jamestown Township, we are the highest at a fifteen percent assessed valuation, so that just pulls our tax bill. And, uh, you know, at, at some point, we're going to, we're going to break it back.
And we don't have a plan for this money, correct? And we have a payment's budget for this year?
Well, I, I think they just answered, uh, you know, what, what we may
Right.
From a road, uh, road, uh, lifespan perspective. So I don't know that we can sit here today and say we don't have because either way, I know more of graphics. I come back to these, even though small.
So it's like a change is that here?
I would characterize it here. I would characterize it as enabling us to make the decision that we want to make.
I think every opportunity we have in lieu of raising our tax levy, we should capitalize. Small, so maybe the top of them.
And we just put twenty thousand for a committee.
Yeah.
Let's go over for months. I, I'm just thinking of not, I'm, I'm trying to think of all of our year-round resident, well, everybody takes this, but, um, I think if you get your directory out and you look, you talk to your neighbors, it keeps going up and up and up and we what do we say no to financially here? I mean, look at our room, we've got, you know, the best meeting room in the county and we need it, I mean, the great thing is now there's house bills proposed that we need to have, you know, everything recorded and we've got that way better than before when we had the cassette that we were using. Um, so I think I'm not saying those expenses are not warranted, but it's, if we, if, if we don't do this tonight, what, when will our next opportunity be? Is it a year from now?
Uh, yeah, it's, it's
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm trying to maybe, you know, when we did our last reestablishment.
I think it was seventeen.
My concern to one of the other announcements, if the whole water thing.
We can't hear you.
No, I said that there, there's other announcements too that we know are out there about fire protection and everything else is quite a big point up, and I'm guessing that's going to be substantial. I guess my, my thoughts are I would hold off on this and let it maybe run its course and see where that comes out with as far as the road dedicated and then established it for next year.
I would agree because we'll have better information on the true cost of the fire, what the fire contract will be moving forward because we'll be moving along there and have a better idea. Okay, uh, this, just so we're all dealing with the same information, this, this would go, this, if we did it now, would we go into effect twenty twenty-four, if we did it next year? We're getting to public comment here. Any other?
Good discussion, thank you. I would like to make a motion.
Second that, Molly.
Second, I wasn't there, I say, I say a nine, I'm at a, at the same time.
Yeah, I just had an idea, um, on your road committee, um, if Andy Brooks agrees to be on the committee, I don't think we need a contractor. Don't have to be a contractor.
No.
So that would save a little money.
Absolutely. Yep, he's on my list. I got his number already.
Okay, but I think you have contractor listed separately.
Paving contractor listed separately from, oh, you're saying combine him with the resident?
Yes.
Well, I would be in addition to the four residents that I've already identified, so he would just be a fifth first. But he would satisfy the paving contractor role.
So you wouldn't have to pay so much.
Uh, the, the, the fees were really, uh, without talking, talking to our engineering firms, whether they would their support would be available to us. I didn't consider pay, paying the paving person, residents, or, you know, it was all, it was all, it was all for interior services. Yeah, and I just, I assume four months if I meet that hill I say, uh, two hundred bucks an hour, which is high. And so, uh, and then an estimate on a number of hours. And if opportunities to run that it. Any other comment?
Yes, the, uh, the increase of the CCD budget would mount to five zero zero five two, okay? It's so small, it's almost insignificant, but if we're going to experience a fire contract increase, okay, so, so once you get this established, it, it no longer decreases, it's going to stay firm for you, you can use that money, pay for fire increases, you can pay for the road improvements you're going to make. Uh, and, and seems to me that somebody ought to really go to the school corporation, say, wait a second, folks, be able to decline uh, student body, and every year, every two years, you go out and take a bond, two million bucks and never turn a green, you always borrow that money and they, they keep that, that floating there forever. And if they want to come in and have more money now to spend, somebody ought to take, take them on straight up. As far as the fire contract, there has to be a way to get around the four mile limitation that we are all opposed with, that we pay a premium for our insurance, so maybe we could work with, with the fire, uh, department, have something on site here that would help them to get inside that, so we wouldn't have, we wouldn't exceed the four mile limitation. I could save, you know, probably four hundred dollars a year on my, on my insurance if I just, if I, if I was one mile closer to, to the fire station, okay? So maybe this could be a, an adjunct fire station or something, I don't know, we could get into that, the insurance guys could talk about that, but I mean, it seems to me that, you know, this is kind of why it's, how foolish, because it's, it's money that you're going to get, that you're going to need for all these increased costs that we're going to incur, so I, I would encourage you to rethink this because we do have a hard line deadline. Uh, we have to do, we have to get it done by May thirty-first, it's got to be done. And if you don't do it this year, then it will be next year, May thirty-first for twenty twenty-five. Okay, so you, so basically by deferring now, you're putting it out two years.
And I know, it appears as you were talking to me, um, I was at the school board meeting and I can look around this room and there were maybe less than a handful of people there.
Right.
Um, so I think that's, uh, we are, we're all responsible and and the fire contract, Brent and I are working on that, I think those are things, I think one of the things that, um, if you go in and talk to the fire, um, team there is the four mile limitation may be one piece of something, but what you don't realize is because of all the equipment that they do have, the ways that your insurance is actually less, you might see it at that four mile limitation, but there's a lot of things based on the years of the equipment and the quality of the equipment that they have there, that your insurance is actually less than if we had to rely on somebody else or a department that did not have the equipment that they do.
The more equipment they have, the better rates are.
If it's, if it, if it's the right equipment, I mean, like some, most insurance company, Denise will check and see, oh, you don't have any fire hydrants, if it's somebody that's not experienced with lake property, because we don't. And so your rate is here, but, um, uh, Eric Kupnickel, the fire chief in Fremont, he'll have all those conversations with the insurance companies, when people do new builds, he is on with the insurance company to work to make sure that people understand how the lake is different than a town and with access to fire hydrants and shares the equipment that they have.
But you have a surplus. You remember, and this is a really good example, because if you remember a few years ago, when the fire department came out, they were right next to the yacht club and they were doing a training session where they were pumping the water out of the lake, creating enough water pressure to be able to use it for their hoses, and they were making the rainbow that was going across the street view. Some of you, man, remember that, that's one thing that Eric did reference to Molly and I, he has in the past, that that ability does combat some of the apprehension, for lack of better words, from the insurance companies about not having the hydrants because they've actually gone out, they've done the test, they've proved that they are able to pull the amount of water that they need out of our lake to ju, to run all of their engines.
You know, good comments.
Thank you very much. Very done, uh, I would move to close public, uh, comment question.
Have a motion, right, second.
George, I'll second.
Motion second, all of them, favor six five, I say a nine.
Aye.
Aye, at the same time, motion third.
So you've moved to open for, uh, uh, I would open for, uh, follow-on discussion, counsel, based on comments that we heard. So I would move to authorize Baker Tilly to perform the recommended services at a MTE price of thirty-five hundred to reestablish the CCD fund by the required by thirty-one to twenty twenty-three, DLGF headline. I have a second. And very soon my motion.
And now we're back to A, I think, nine minutes.
That ain't the sound.
Yes, we're going to talk fast and you might eventually be able to get out of here. Um, I'd like to move to introduce ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one, an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash one-two, setting salaries and wages of the officers and employees for the town of Clear Lake, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-three.
I would, I would second that.
I have a motion in the second. All those in favor signify by a nine.
Aye.
At the same time, security.
Ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one is an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash broad seven salaries and wages of the officers and employees for the town of Clear Lake, Indiana for the year twenty twenty-three. Whereas the town council on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two adopted ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash twelve to establish salaries and wages of the officers and employees of the town for twenty twenty-three. And whereas the town council passed an ordinance twenty twenty-two dash seventeen, an ordinance amending section four, insurance benefits and reserve section four, whereas the council desires to rename section four longevity pay. And whereas the council desires to add the following. Section four, longevity pay, all full-time employees and clerk treasurer will receive longevity pay for each full year of uninterrupted employment with the town of Clear Lake. Uninterrupted employment does not include any absence when an employee is paid to include paid time off, PTO, holidays, bereavement leave, workers' compensation or military leave, but does include any time that an employee goes without pay for greater than thirty consecutive days. Longevity pay will be calculated as stated in the chart below. Years of service and the amount, on the employee's one-year anniversary, one thousand dollars, on the employee's second through fifth year anniversary, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, on the employee's sixth through ninth year anniversary, one thousand five hundred dollars, on the employee's tenth through fourteenth year of anniversary, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, on the employee's fifteenth year anniversary and beyond, two thousand dollars.
Longevity pay will not normally be paid on the payday following an employee's anniversary date and will be used in the calculation of overtime for non-accepted employees. Payments will be made from each department's bud, budget as follows, clerk treasurer, the general sewer and sanitation, billing, general sewer and sanitation, street motor, uh, and V H, sewer, sewer, zoning administrator, general, and V H sewer. They're now therefore be ordained by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana, that one, section four longevity pay is hereby replacing the reserved section previously known as section four insurance benefits. Two, the provision within section four longevity pay is hereby established in the two thousand twenty-three salary ordinance. Be it further ordained that this amendment of ordinance number two zero two two dash one two shall take effect immediately upon adoption by the council and be it further ordained that the council rat, ratifies and confirms the remaining provisions and in ordinance number two zero two two dash one two as adopted on October eighteenth from, uh, two thousand twenty-two, passed, enacted and adopted by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Steuben County, Indiana, this twenty-first day of February twenty twenty. Council of Town of Clear Lake, Aaron Thorpe, member, Molly Weber, Wem. Council of Town of Clear Lake, Aaron Thorpe, member, Molly Weber, member, Weber, member. Brent Slusser, member, Dan Ripley, member, George Shable, member, attest, Nathan Stryker, clerk treasurer.
Something's different on the screen.
Yes, it is.
What you read out loud, I think was the original one that I typed out. And then when you just read, I think it's the one that they amended for you.
The dates are different.
I think mainly.
Yes, that would be. But pass and inactive and adopt a date still.
Molly, yeah, um, on the part that we're right just going through.
Longevity pay, right?
Yeah.
He said longevity pay, oh, not normally.
Correction, longevity pay will normally be paid on the payday following the employee's anniversary date and will be used in calculation of overtime for non-exempt employees.
And then there was another place that you were reading, Molly, and I can't tell you what it was, but up above it was in a paragraph form, not a board. So is that the final one that Robert stuck?
So, well, yeah, because it looks like a duplicate here. And so I think what is here is not what you guys are reading.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll just get the correct one and update the slide. I think that's what you know. I mean, can't do it right now, but I mean, for the website.
Yeah. Yeah, I can read, we can read.
We can read the new one. Oh.
Yeah, just go back to the top.
Everything was.
Into such.
So what's with us? Section four.
Starting where, um.
Right where Brett took off, right?
Longevity.
For an employee is paid, uh, starting there. I think there was something in there that was amiss.
Yeah. So then it goes back to section four again down here. Section four, beer section four down there. So then I don't have the remainder of the document essentially.
So was, was.
At the top, it's referring to the old section four.
Right.
At the bottom, it's referring to the new.
No, no, Robert, yeah, you're fine. We were good down to there. Everything's aligned.
Okay.
And then we go, this, that's all the same. Now we're there. That's the same. So right here. Okay. Stop right there.
That's where.
Okay. So we'll start, start with now there's four and just read it there.
Now therefore be ordained by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Indiana, that one, section four of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash twelve is hereby amended as follows. Section four longevity pay, all full-time employees and the clerk treasurer will receive longevity pay for each full year of uninterrupted employment with the town of Clear Lake. Abs- absence when employee is paid paid to include paid time off PTO, holidays, agreement leave, workers' compensation or military leave does not constitute interruption of employment. But the interruption of employment would result if an employee does not receive pay for more than thirty consecutive days. Longevity pay will be determined as follows. Uh, go back. I gotta read that. But there was one more line on the bottom of that.
I love it.
That was good.
Yeah. I have, I think I have it entered.
I think it was just like a a button.
And I, it's not. Yes, just like months ago.
Okay. Years of service. One, on the employee's one year anniversary, one thousand dollars. On the employee's second through fifth year anniversary, one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. On the employee's sixth through ninth year anniversary, one thousand five hundred dollars. On the employee's tenth through fourteenth year anniversary, one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. On the employee's fifteenth year anniversary and beyond, two thousand dollars. Longevity pay will normally be paid on the payday following an employee's anniversary date and will be used in the calculation of overtime for non-exempt employees. Payments will be made from each department's budget as follows. Clerk Treasurer, General Sewer and Sanitation, Billing, General Sewer Sanitation, Street, M V H. Sewer, sewer. So I mean, Administrator, General, M V H Sewer. Be it further ordained that this amendment of ordinance number twenty twenty two dash twelve will be retroactive to January the first, twenty twenty three. And be it further ordained that the council ratifies and confirms the remaining provisions. Ordinance number two zero two two dash one two as adopted on October eighteenth, twenty twenty two. Enacted and adopted by the town council of the town of Clear Lake, Steuben County. With correction here on the twenty first day of February, twenty twenty two. Twenty twenty three. Council of the town of Clear Lake, Aaron Thorpe, member, Molly Weber, member, Brent Slusser, member, Dan Ripley, member, George Shable, member, attest, Nathan Striker.
So now, um, thank you, Brett, Kathy, Jessica, for all the help. Um, we'll open it up for a council discussion.
Is this retroactive?
Yes.
Yeah, to the first of the year.
To the January first. So I think we've had one employee who's had an anniversary and so.
I have no comments.
Do we want to open it for public comment? Move to open it for public comment?
Second.
Anybody in the public have any comments on this? Oh, she's. Me too. Nobody had any questions.
I'll move to close public comment.
We started the vote unopened, you know, I didn't vote. I just, I, I just look great for it. I'd like to make a motion to close public comment.
I'll second that.
I have a motion in a second.
Hi.
Thanks. Same time.
I'd like to move to suspend rules and do the second reading by title only.
Second, that.
Motion and second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Same time.
Second reading ordinance number two zero two three zero one, an ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty twenty two dash twelve. Setting salaries and wages of the officers and employees for the town of Clear Lake, Indiana for the year twenty twenty two. That completes the second reading. I move to pass ordinance twenty twenty three dash zero one.
Question on the second. This is Brent, I'll second.
Question on the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Over the same time, looking.
We can push it. We have twenty five minutes.
Monthly report is quick.
All right.
Item seven, monthly report, financial report.
Thank you.
First just.
You're.
For the fund report, what we're looking at here is January first through, uh, January thirty first of this year. Uh, the general fund balance at the beginning of the year is two hundred ninety seven thousand nine hundred forty seven dollars and sixty nine cents. The balance, um, currently is three hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred sixty seven dollars and forty nine cents. Revenue one to date is fifteen thousand five hundred forty five dollars and sixty six cents. We have dispersed once a day out of the general fund nineteen thousand five hundred forty two dollars of eighty minutes. Uh, sanitation. The other major one that we in right now, beginning, uh, balance, beginning of the year was seven thousand two hundred six dollars and twenty two cents. Uh, dispersed from today, eleven hundred fifty six dollars and fifty eight cents. We're operating on the balance at the beginning of the year was sixty five thousand hundred forty seven and seventy cents. Our balance on the sewer operating fund is a hundred and thirty nine thousand four fifty six and two cents. Revenue of the operating fund is seventy four thousand forty one dollars and twenty four cents. And we dispersed on it that from nineteen thousand five hundred fifty two dollars of eighty minutes. As far as, uh, the fund report, does that we have any questions about that?
Question?
None. And that's that you posted the revenue report. We did not have a local revenue report on this. Meaning I can get that here. Okay, yeah, please do. Today, I normally check to make sure that the, uh, the year-to-date revenue matches the revenue report. I love to pull up the reports. We were thinking an extra report for you guys, but, um, I need the appropriation of the fund report for this meeting. If you ever need a revenue reporter or any other report, I can pull it up.
Yeah, so that I get the revenue.
Yeah, just add it, just upload it to this packet. Won't that be okay?
Yeah. Let's throw it on the team. Well, just throw it in the team's file. Uh, we're gonna please start work total of, uh, two hundred and one and a half hours in January through seven hundred and seventy four miles. Um, handled three calls for the month of January, which were A C S set to Fremont Police Department, one for the United States Police. Uh, Sheriff's Office handled two reports within the pound, one on alarm, one on welfare check. And the sheriff's office had eleven incidents within the township of Clear Lake, which consisted of a suspicious vehicle, criminal mischief. Your property damage craft is a structured fire, animal problem, or service, two invasion of privacy, the child molesting, and mental problems. Well, I'm not a problem. Um, we had one firearm committed, you four vehicles inspected, none, and one reported. Wrote. Um, the only thing I'm asking for right now, they need permission to spend two thousand six hundred and seven dollars for break-ins to order three new ballistic vests. One for Rex Tire, one for Alaterra, and one for Tom Patterson, all three of the vests expire this year between May and I think it's August, um. When I can place the order, the return on those items is anywhere from two to three months to get those in. So, um, it's ready to give it a word. And this was already built into your budget. So.
Yeah.
It's already got this, a, 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 you've already got that built into your cost. This is a, oh. Chris, you can speak to it better, but it's an essential part that we want our deputies to be able to have and be required to wear for our policy and they all have that. At that, and also, so we gotta add. Knowing we already have the budget for Chris to proceed. Uh, Christie, think you got any leeway? We need a little bit higher in case you got a base shipping or something. I don't know. Uh, that's gonna be the exact dollar amount, two thousand six hundred and seven dollars. It won't be anything. Everything that's all included is the shipping. Everything is included in that dollar amount. Got your motion?
I'll second that.
Question. Any further discussion?
Just a real quick question. What's the life expectancy?
Five years. And then just age is out. Yeah, they out and we have to listen. They had two of us last year, we bought, and, uh, the three this year, and we'll have another one. Next, you'll follow, you're gonna put out next Monday, this year.
Any more discussion?
No.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Over the same time.
So I have.
Fire department report.
All right. For the month of January, we had two mutual aids. One medical assist, one, one, one fire alarm, and one CO two investigation within the town of Clear Lake. We had a grand total of four for Clear Lake Township that consisted of one medical assist, two fire alarms, and one fire structure. The fire structure was along, uh, nine twenty five. Closer towards one point. Um, areas of concern or note, uh, as Molly and myself have both moved into, we are working with the Fremant- Fremont fire department on a potential contract for after twenty point three.
Questions, Brett?
We could go over the summary, but it's one month stuff. That's all good.
All right, uh, something.
All right, um, no I L P is this month, none for the year yet, no after the facts. I did have a couple requests, um, their I L P is not required, so they were exempt from the I L P process, um. I, and just about the, I noticed over the last couple meetings, it doesn't seem like I get like a plan commission B C A update. So I'm gonna try incorporating those as well for your basis for my report. So uh, first one is, is, uh, we had a meeting date on two seven, twenty thirteen, it's seven o'clock, um. Our agenda had the election of officers required by the, um, rules of procedure, um, Bill Hannah was, uh, voted in as the president, Dan Ripley was voted in as vice president, and then Jim. Oh, sorry, Jim, uh, Hallwell, what is it, something, executive committee. P C is, um, pushing the twenty twenty two U D O amendment to that space, which involve public involvement, feedback, um, I'm getting ready to get that out so we can start getting the comment cards ready or out to the people. So that way we can get into the public hearing at our next meeting. Um, in a couple months. So, um, the reviewed and adapted amendments for the rules of procedure, um, a lot of clerical stuff, uh, it is available, um, if anyone wants to see that. Uh, B C A had a meeting, uh, Valentine's Day, two fourteen, twenty twenty three at seven P M. Uh, again, uh, for the rules of procedure, we need to do an election of officers. Jim McLean was voted as chairman, Kit Tyler was voted in as vice chairman. I didn't put myself up in there, but they wanted me to be a secretary. Uh, so, uh, but no cases were heard for either, um, board. Uh, projects are right now are, uh, U D O updates twenty twenty two dash zero two, which we discussed a little bit ago. Um, it's about the LA structure, str- uh, standards. It will be available for review here soon. Comprehensive plan pending for the quotes. I got a little bit behind when I got out there, so I haven't received the quotes yet. But I'm, I'm saying fuse home and update, uh, limited progress, mainly due probably to weather and time of year. I plan to contact them by the end of the month, um, to discuss moving forward in twenty twenty three and reviewing the time script of that layer we set up. And see where it needs to, uh, be tweaked because of weather, um.
And I can't let you know that they have that. I can't let you know they have them for a week now.
And I'm not, I'm here to, and I totally see what's the improvements from the assets. The last time I was by, it was trusses. Of course, you know, they got tarp on the roof and they're all bored of them, but I'm sure a lot of the works are here. Um, and then just updates for me, um. And so continue working on full process streets, updating for, um, metric tracking. Dan asked me to help, um, and essentialize everybody's metrics. So those will be, um, available. Uh, person's, um, recommendation. I'm gonna try to have them up by the end of the month so that, that way everybody can be on, um, consistently online from now on instead of being done at the town meetings. Uh, and then, uh, these updates which we discussed earlier, and then the top, so that I don't need to say anything about that. Guy is online, uh, and always not feeling great and he's hacking up a lot. I'm sorry, although I would do this report unless you've really done the dealer. Uh, but. But. Uh so guy, um guy got a hundred and ninety five hours uh for this uh. Period Denver at a hundred and seventy six point five hours. Uh no other uh time allocations were noted, sewer department statistics. They did twenty six located, several lines caused grinder pumps, they replaced three and set up two. Newer repair pumps are ready to be placed into the system, eight, they still have ten boxes and three remaining. Uh average fall um for the period was um twenty thousand nine hundred and seventy one gallons per day. So in a summary, um he has estimates for two new Liberty grinder stations, which I actually have. Uh right here, uh the sewer truck uh um. Mileage for the month is four hundred and thirty four, street department summary tractor went in for repairs, uh the faulty injection pump. And then street truck mileage, whoops, sorry, street truck mileage is at three hundred and twenty nine. Uh to this estimate, um guy gave it to me today. Uh the total. Uh amount due, including shipping and handling, which they have zero is sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars and thirty two cents is the quote. From Tri-State Star, Tri-Stars, I supply, sorry.
What was the number again?
It was sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars and thirty two cents. Uh the quote is. Well, but I don't know, I hope you got a uh uh extension. Hey guys, did you get an extension on that quote?
Did we get other?
This is the only one he gave.
He's sleeping.
Here it is.
What, what was that?
This is uh the quote that you got for the Liberty. Stations uh expired on the twelfth. Do you have it updated?
That is the updated quote. He didn't change the date on it, because I had it from last month.
Which, yeah, okay, okay. Alright, so you're confident in the exact number?
Yes.
Thank you. So I would uh I would make a motion to approve. An expenditure of sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty one dollars, thirty two cents for Liberty uh grinder stations.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Yes, Molly, I'll second that.
Motion and second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by the same aye.
Aye aye.
By the same time.
Nice guy, hope you feel better.
Thanks for filling in, Robert.
Oh, I, I do a great.
Alright, item uh council member reports.
Just like to congratulate Guy Rogers for celebrating the sixth year anniversary.
Thank you for the town, yeah. Anybody else?
Molly on.
Still our discussion.
You don't. And on top of. Um I'm pretty sure this title will have to go to auction credit. Yeah, just can't tell. So I guess my thing is, is if you guys think the title is worth sixteen seventy thousand. This couldn't ring whatever ring. So if somebody is not interested in the whole police title, because I know many people are. You could bring five hundred dollars to. Whatever, so it's just something to think about. You don't want to take it or give it away. If you could use.
What else?
The other thing I wanted to say, I think the reason why the mileage was so low was because, one, they had to, or some of the equipment. The stickers off the side and wait for plates so that municipal plates, so that town police could actually drive that, otherwise. They would have been driving on um police, police plate. And according to it would have said, police on the side of it, which I don't know. So there was a few months, can I write correctly? Nobody told me that.
Anyone else? Intertin the motion. We're gonna give it to her.
I'd like to move that we. At you in the meeting.
I'll second that.
Oh, motion in a second. The ten minutes to spare.
That was continued.
Um yeah, if we went over ours.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye aye.
Get the vote in on that one.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yep.